Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv.
Thursday, April 20, 2025, excuse me, at 7:00 PM in the Noack Room of the Town Office Building located at 10th Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. And we're going to start by introducing the board. I'm Langdon Plummer, and to my right, that's left, isn't it? To my left.
John Gruder.
Gwen English.
And.
Marty Kennedy.
Will be acting tonight.
Jen Martel.
And.
Dean Hubbard.
Will also be acting tonight. Okay, I don't want to put minutes off because we're three, would be three sets off. So what I want to do is deal with the minutes of February 27 and March 13 this night, tonight, and then we'll do the next two the next time. So I'm open to discussion about the minutes of February 27. Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Let's see. Does anyone else want to go first?
Well, I got two quick ones.
Okay.
Let Marty change his name to Mary again.
Yeah, you could do that one. Okay.
Second line. And then Bonnie Drive, B-O-N-N-Y, I think it's I-E.
Do you think he can go through it? And if he finds it once, can he change it somehow? Will the computer allow him to change it?
Okay.
Yes, throughout? Because there are so many Bonnie Drives that it's going to take forever to point them all out. Okay. Line 76?
76. Yes.
There's a "B" in the middle of "transition in townhomes." It's probably a "two," should probably be "two," I'm not sure, but.
Yes, yeah.
Of. On line 96, toward the end of the sentence, it should read "peak hours," not "house."
Ah.
And the first Bonnie Drive error in this is on line 101.
Yep.
Bonnie. On line 144, it should be "story homes." There are no two-story homes, not Stories Home. And another Bonnie. On line 151, it should probably end the sentence at "agree," which is right in the middle of that line. And start the next sentence with "the," "the buffers serve a purpose." Oh, that was my quote, yeah. Let's see.
I thought that was "serve no purpose."
Where's that?
In what you're talking about there. I wasn't sure of the meaning.
Oh, I see. She appreciated the changes but did not agree that the buffers.
This is kind of a double negative there.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know that that's what I said, but let me, I should be, "did not agree the buffers." Sorry, I'm trying to think back to how I worded that. My main point in that was that the buffers serve a purpose.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Why don't we just say that?
But indicated, she appreciated the changes, but feels that the buffers serve a purpose.
Okay.
Once again, thank you for helping me compose.
Sharpshooter number two here.
169.
Which number did he say?
169.
169, okay, thank you.
Showed his house and asked why the proposed, I think it maybe should say, asked if the proposed fence could continue, or the "why" doesn't really work there. He may have said that, but it doesn't really.
Well, if you use "why," you could put in "could not continue."
Okay, that's fine.
I think it conveys the meaning.
Why not?
That works. Let's see, Bonnie, 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 lots of Bonnies.
Yeah. We're doing the minutes of.
Line 222, Mr. Sharples recommended living in the regulations. I'm not sure what that sentence was.
Line number again?
Indicate, line 222.
222.
I think he meant within the regulation.
Got to change the page.
So that would, Mr. Sharples. Living within, like leaving living there and living within?
Well, that, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. Line 227, toward the end of the sentence, it should be "two," T-W-O, 50-foot buildings. Noted. Line 263, the last word in the, last word in that line should be "noted," N-O-T-E-D. And then the next line, kind of in the middle, that second sentence should start out with "there," T-H-E-R-E, "there is less impervious pavement." Line 278, Chair Plummer asked if the driveway closed. I think it should be "close."
Close.
Almost, almost there. I think that's it. That's all I had.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a couple. 229, I think it should be from 50 to 34. I don't remember ever mentioning 80. Did they originally have 80?
I don't know.
I think I've seen, I've seen 50 originally, but I don't remember the 80. So I don't know, I just don't.
It was 80?
Was it?
Okay, thank you. I wasn't, I'm a little new.
Also, on line 278, instead of the line could be taken out, I think what you meant there was could be moved further from the property line. Wait a minute, the driveway could be moved further from the property line. The "taken out" doesn't make sense to me.
I think you're right. Okay, like a motion to accept minutes as amended.
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. We can do this with a voice vote, so those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition, abstentions. The ayes have it. Thank you. Now we'll move to the set of minutes of March 13. I would say line 108 is unidentified. Have we, can we identify the gentleman who was speaking about the cars and the traffic?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe Dave would have to do that, I don't know. That and 111. Oh, 122, same person.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Does Daniel do this from the tape?
Yes.
He does it from the tape, so he could look at that again and maybe figure it out.
Yeah, we can do that.
The issue becomes if the person didn't identify.
Or just, sorry, just ask Dave to correct, to put the name in there. Yeah. So then I'd look for a motion to approve.
I have some.
Oh, excuse me!
Sorry.
Moving right along.
Charging into this again.
Intact the color.
Okay, line 74, Marty, you can help me. Sightline would be S-I-G-H-T, not S-I-T-E, is that right?
74.
Sightlines?
Sight, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, just to make sure. Okay, so sightline on line 74, S-I-G-H-T, it's again on line 77, near the end of the sentence, also sightline. Line 151. Never mind, I reread that, it's okay. Again, on line 206, noted, not noted, M-O, N-O-T-E-D. I don't understand line 226. He asked if the board could recommend renditions from Gil Street.
Is it renderings?
Renderings, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, renderings. Oh, Mr. Identified shows up in 287.
287? Other than the Bonnie Drive corrections, I think that's all I had.
Anything else?
I had one on 169, just for clarification. Between "in" and "building," I think it should be "in front of" building one.
Okay, motion?
You go. Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of March 13, 2025, with the corrections as noted.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Abstention, excuse me, objections? Nay? No nays? And abstentions, none? So the minutes are passed with noted changes. Okay, let's move along to contingent public hearing on the application of Stone Arch Development for the site plan review for proposed proposal for the redevelopment of the property located at 112 Front Street. Properties include the demolition of existing buildings and new construction of 17 townhouse style condominium units and associated site improvements. Subject property is located in a C1 central area commercial zoning district and identified as tax map parcel 73-14 and is planning based case 2417. It's a continuance, but I'd ask Kristin, who is with us this evening, to read Mr. Sharples' comments, please.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I am sitting in for Dave tonight and will be reading his memo, as you indicated. The applicant submitted the multifamily site plan review application for the proposed redevelopment of the property at 112 Front Street. The developer is proposing to demolish the existing buildings on the site and construct, your memo says 17, but it's been revised to 16 townhouse style residential condos and associated site improvements. The property is located in C1, Central Area Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 7314. The applicant was originally before the board, January 23. A site walk was conducted February 6. The applicant returned for further discussion February 27 and March 13, at which time it was tabled to the March 27 meeting. The applicant subsequently submitted a request for continuance to tonight's meeting to provide them time to address the comments or concerns from the March 13 Planning Board meeting. At the last meeting, Mr. Sharples notes that a Planning Board member inquired about the 65-day statutory review timeframe. This has now exceeded that timeframe, but that was a result of the applicant requesting a continuance until this meeting. Should the board not reach a position to take action tonight on this application, Mr. Sharples recommends that you ask the applicant to agree on the record to such an extension. The applicant has submitted revised plans and supporting documents dated April 2, 2025, and those were enclosed in your board packets for review. The applicant was originally requesting free waivers from the board's site plan review and subdivision regulations, as outlined in the waiver request letters due to January 21st, February 19th, which was previously mailed. However, the requested waiver from Section 9364 for grading within five feet of the exterior property line wave is no longer needed. So that has been revoked, that request has been revoked. Dave did provide some motions below, and should you be, he also provided conditions of approval should you be ready to act tonight.
Thank you. Kristin, would you like to pick up at this point? Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kristin Smith, engineer with Beals Associates. John O'Neill of Stone Arch Development is with us here in the audience as well, and I thought, if it pleases the Chair, that I would just go through, we had a fairly cohesive list of items from the last hearing that we've made revisions based on, and I can just walk you through those if that is okay with you.
Please do.
Okay, firstly, while I still disagree with Dave that the drive-by access the homes, parking areas should be included, we did run that calculation, which still resulted in a 16-unit density, and Mr. O'Neill has now proposed 16 units. You can see the front building that faces Front Street is now a three-unit building. The others remain unchanged. Those density calculations now appear on Sheet 5, as well as his presentation plan. And this, this allowed us to provide a, basically, it's a 30.75-foot separation to the parcel at 114 Front Street, which is northwest of us, and that is to the nearest building corner to the nearest building on the property. So that's, that's an improvement of over 10 feet in separation. On the lighting plan, you can see on your lighting plan, which is in the plan set, these have been added by the lighting engineering consultant, and the foot candles on the northwesterly property boundary are still at zero, as they were before. There was a comment, or comments, about snow storage and the plantings near those areas, and they have been revised and relocated, as you can see on Sheet 8B. That's the updated landscape plan from our landscape architect. The mail kiosk has been relocated. If this thing works. There we go.
Right there.
Right there. So it is out of the snow storage area. People can just pull in, turn around, back out, turn around, and, you know, however they want to get their mail and get.
So it's across, across the road from where it was.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, and out of an area where they would be pushing snow directly. The discussion of trash, I just want to touch base because it was mentioned and taken down in our notes. Again, that is going to be by, you know, in-garage totes, and a private hauler will pick them up on a weekly basis, much like the municipality provides, but this being a private drive, that will be funded and paid for by the condo association. No handicap parking required. We have removed reference to handicap parking, and again, you know, in a situation like this, where they're all residential units, handicap access to the buildings will be in through the garage. And the only thing I did notice is that I forgot to erase the detail on Sheet 10. I can let you know that has been done on the AutoCAD file. That detail is no longer on Sheet 10. There was then a comment regarding removal of the curving and extending the pervious pavement out to the property line, and that has been done as well. And I believe, in my opinion, because we were, you know, when there was conventional pavement there, we had no other alternative but to propose a catch basin to tie it into the existing basin in the street. I believe that eliminates another waiver request as well, which would be the one for But that has been done, and again, further reduces the water flowing towards the street in any given rain event. The concrete washout location has been shown, shown on, it's depicted on Sheet 5, you can see it here, up by the furthest building, just inside the turnaround, and of course, that's only temporary while they're pouring foundations. That'll be then cleaned up and removed, and the detail has been added to Detail Sheet Number 10. Comments specific to enhancing the landscape buffer and providing a specimen tree, that has been done as well. And the specimen tree that she selected, located right here, so it's just northwest of the first building or Unit C, in a lawn area outside of the infiltration basin over there, and she is proposing a Forest Panzy Eastern Red Bud. And as you can see, that will be visible from Front Street, well, if you're going slow enough, it'll be visible from Front Street. But nonetheless, that was her selection on a, on a specimen tree for that location. So the buildings, all, all five buildings now have the four elevations, including front, rear, and, and both sides. That is in your packet as well, and, and those were, those were requested to be in black and white, and we have those, I believe, yeah, right there. So all of the buildings, that would be the three unit, that would be the two four units, and, it's another four unit, and then the five. So those are all, those are all squared away as well and have been provided. Then with regard to the simplification of the plan set, we felt that providing the color presentation plan, which basically encompasses, encompasses everything except for the landscaping and the lighting, obviously, have been provided, and I think that cleans things up, gives everybody one sheet to look at. And I think that cleans things up, gives everybody one sheet to look at. And a final note I wanted to add is that all of the fencing that is depicted on the landscape plan has now been added graphically to Sheet Number 6 in the civil plans as well. And those are the major changes. Again, I think by virtue of extending the pervious pavement out to the property line the way we originally had it, eliminating the curbing, I believe that eliminates the need for all waivers except for the 22-feet drive aisle as opposed to a 24. And with that, I'll address any comments or questions to the board.
We have an email that, from Charlie French, 9 Gill Street. My wife Dana and I reside at 9 Gill Street in Exeter. We unfortunately cannot attend tonight's Planning Board meeting regarding the 1112 Front Street property. One of the items that Mr. Sam Moose, spelling question mark, addressed in a previous Planning Board meeting was a verbal commitment he made to build a six-foot cedar fence behind our home at 9 Gill Street to give us some privacy from adjacent development. It should be in the minutes, and I do not see it in the newest site plan. I apologize if I missed it. Could you comment about that? Did you get a copy of this, by the way?
I have not, no. Oh, it's on the landscape plan? All right, let's go take a peek. So she's got all of the fencing. And which one of those is nine, John? Oh, right here. Yeah, that entire, that entire property boundary is fenced. And it is called out on the landscape plan as well. And again, graphically depicted on the civil plan. So that has.
So that is there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question while they're on that property? In one of the initial meetings, I think it was the French, the French couple who inquired about, or they were concerned about a large tree, like they said it was a 150-year-old maple, maybe? And they were concerned about the health of that as you're doing construction. I don't, I'm, with their comment, I'm assuming that it's fairly close to this, their, to your property line, and I just wondered if you had had a chance to take a look at that and if you can just use.
I would presume, Gwen, that it is probably that guy, that's an existing tree, that is proposed to be maintained and retained.
Is that on your property or theirs?
The trunk is on our property.
Oh, it is?
I'm sure the canopy could spill over, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay. I guess I was under the impression that it was on theirs and close to the line, and with any work you're doing along that fence line, that you might damage roots. And so I just put that up as a red flag to be.
Yeah, our landscape designer was very thoughtful when she went through. There are breaks in some of the walls along the northwestern, western property boundary specific to not damaging trees. So I believe that's certainly been taken care of. And there's no grading that's going to be resulting from the pond that would impact that as well.
Okay, great.
Or either.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I want to go back, I want to go back for one sec. Sorry.
Please use your microphones so that everybody can hear us. That's good. Thank you, everybody.
Kristen, on the email, you have the email now, right?
The one that.
From Charlie French?
Yes.
He's referencing a cedar fence, and the plan references a vinyl fence.
Yeah, and I think what it boiled down to is vinyl fences don't need, don't need repair. And it is the same earth and tone color.
Right.
That we're putting next to Adele's property up in front. So it just kind of made sense to make those the same material, the same color.
Okay, I just want to point that out because they're two different materials, and I don't want the wrong expectation set.
Yeah, I believe that decision was simply because of the old adage, vinyl is vinyl.
Thank you.
That was what I was going to bring up.
Oh, was it? Okay.
When you're putting in the fence, I don't know how close you're coming to Front Street with that, but make sure either, it may already been designed this way, but just run this by Doug and make sure that it slams, if it's close to the property line on Front Street, that it slants down so it doesn't have.
It won't.
So people go.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it can be angled down to make it look nice, so it's not an abrupt end, but.
Right.
Okay.
Marty, you have a question?
Yeah, let's see. I like the reduction of the four units to three out front. Did the, did the units get larger, the individual units? Are they the same size as they were when they were four?
Same size.
Okay.
The front one did? Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me, I was away for a couple of weeks in Italy, so I'm trying to get my head back into this, but I'm pretty sure we expanded that from 20, initially it was 22, we went to 24 feet there, Christian.
Yeah, that's very possible.
So the length of, say, the frontage of the building itself, how much did it shrink?
Initially, we were at 22 feet, Marty, and we went to 24, so it added eight feet, but we lost one unit.
Yeah, so in other words, it went from 88.
Yeah.
To 72.
Could someone just clarify that? That's not clear at all. We started with.
Guys got to use mics, you got to introduce yourselves.
We started with 24.
Yeah. Yeah, we were actually reducing the size of those units to 22-foot on that building out front. And then we decided to switch to the three unit, we went, made them back to 24. So we actually, we addition to subtraction, subtraction to addition, we added two feet to three of them, so those are 66 feet versus the original 88, Christian?
Yeah, four 22-foot wide units.
So you've added two feet to three units.
24, yeah, 72 feet, so 72 versus 88. So there's a 16-foot reduction in the width. You understand that, sir?
Is that the new math thing? Wow. I think we got there.
And all the other ones are 24 as well.
Yeah, I think what he was trying to explain, Aaron, is that originally that building was four 24 units.
Yes, got it.
We had reduced it down to four 22-unit buildings. When he eliminated the unit.
Right.
He put it back to 24 feet. So, yeah.
He didn't lose 22 feet.
Right.
He lost.
We did not lose 22.
14 feet.
Correct.
Yes.
It's kind of like an accordion. Anybody else have a question? Yeah, parking? Go ahead, Dean.
Yes, I would like a comment on the waiver about the five feet. Your driveway is still five and a half feet from the property line. Can you not do any grading within, within?
Yeah, that will go in, that will be excavated. I mean, we're going to be going in there and putting in the plantings at the request of the abutter, but we're not grading the soil. That soil is going to stay at the existing grade, and you can, you can look at the grading plan and see that, I mean, basically, we are right at existing ground. And the thing is, with these pervious pavements, they are literally boxed. They're not, you know, like a normal conventional pavement. They are literally carved out as a box.
I am concerned about the proximity of the existing tree there on the corner and the driveway. What kind of thing, are you doing anything to ensure that you don't damage the roots of that tree when you put the driveway in?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you know, what I've been told, and perhaps Jen can opine if she disagrees, but what I've been told is that if you maintain the root system, basically, vertically down from the canopy, the tree has a very good chance of survival, and that will be the plan. And obviously, nothing's going to be happening on the other sides of it. You know, it'll just be that one where the driveway passes by.
I think it would be helpful, just on that note, I think this is the second time now that tree protection has come up, and there aren't tree protection plans or details in your drawings. So that might be something that's helpful to document and submit with the, with the package. I think it's something that, especially on the site that has so many existing trees that are to remain, it would be important to sort of codify how you're going to protect those trees during construction. A lot of times, they'll be fencing around the trees to ensure that contractors aren't actually getting into that critical root zone.
Yeah, just like the orange visi-fence sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of different ways to do it, and I wouldn't necessarily tell you what's the most appropriate for this project, but something that can be erected and maintained throughout construction.
Yep, yep. We can certainly have that conversation with our landscape designer.
That's a condition.
Yep.
Yeah, it did.
Questions down here?
Parking, two spots in each garage and two right in front of the garage door?
Correct.
In Building Four, there's room for them to get in and out of there?
Yes.
Those end units?
Yep, they have a 19-foot-deep parking space and a 20-foot drive by.
I was hoping it wouldn't be wide enough, you could reduce the building three to four units, but.
No such luck.
The, and you said no handicap parking?
Correct. For this layout, no handicap parking is proposed. Handicap access would be through the garage and the.
Garage and that, okay.
Yep.
I had a comment.
Yes.
The waiver within the grading, within the five-foot of the property line? So I've discussed that with Dave, the town planner, a couple of times, because that waiver is, I don't think we've ever denied it in my time on this board. So it's almost one that I like to see people do, Christian, because if.
I mean, the waiver has been submitted.
Well, I'm saying, if you get in the field and it makes more sense to do some alterations to the grade, it would be a little silly not to have that, especially considering it's a waiver. So with it being a waiver, Dave Sharples may not be comfortable just saying, oh, yeah, as billed, not a big change. You know what I'm saying? Especially because you submitted it, you pull it off the table. I would suggest you go forward with that waiver.
That's perfectly.
In my opinion. I also think it's one that we are going to be discussing in our regulations, potentially changing, because it's, we're doing site review anyway. So to make that a waiver, it's a challenge. And it's just, I think, a lot of unnecessary work for our board and for our applicants.
Right.
But you've already done the work?
Yes.
So I would, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Gwen?
Thank you, Lynn. Between unit, well, I've got the buildings here, the two buildings on the left. You have snow storage in that lawn area? So if you go to the very end of the complex and turn right where the pavement ends, you have it listed as snow storage area. I sort of have a hard time determining what's the front and the back of the buildings and who's, where people are going to be entering their units. But it looks like you have, that a major access point is between what, no, you can't see it on that, but the lawn area, and it goes directly into the back of that upper unit. And if you're putting snow storage in there, is that not going to be a problem? If that's where people are plowing snow, you're kind of blocking the pedestrian access to the, to the walkway. I mean, I guess you're, whoever is doing maintenance is going to have to really be.
And there's going to be a maintenance company that probably does everything on this property, maintains the vegetation, maintains the plantings, does the winter maintenance, all of that. And are you talking in?
I wish I had a, right down there. Yeah, that's the snow storage, and that's where the walkway begins. Just seems awkward to me, but.
Well, we initially, if you remember, had the walkway connecting from Building Three to Building Four. And it was, it was actually removed and created so that it ends on, I can't read that unit from here, but.
Unit.
It ends on the northwesterlymost unit on the end building and starts just at the end of that on the far right-hand side. So there's room to store snow in there. And, you know, we have the note on there, and it will, I'm sure, be part of the condominium documents, that any snow storage area that becomes inundated and starts encroaching into the, into the drive aisles, that has to be moved. That will be moved, you know, with a loader and a truck and legally disposed of. Off-site, obviously.
I believe you're talking about not only the drive aisles, but the walkways also.
Right. Yeah.
The WPL as well?
Yeah, and right, the walkways will be cleared by the same maintenance company. Yeah, that's, that's the beauty of condo living. You don't remove snow anymore.
You never lived in a condo.
I have not. I move my own snow.
Adele, you had a question?
Yeah, can I have a mic, please? Living in a condo and knowing how high the snow and ice banks could be, just listening to that concern, when the snow does melt and then it turns to ice, and when those cars are coming out of their driveway, they need to put a lot of treatment on that ground there because it's a liability for someone to fall, having experienced that direction from the sun. So I just wanted to throw that out there, I don't want anybody to get hurt. So when the snow melts, you have ice, a sheet of ice, and people getting in and out of their garage. Thank you.
Is the walkway pervious?
It is.
It is pervious. Pervious. Hopefully, the pervious, the nature of the pervious.
Certainly aids in that, yeah. If it's warm enough to melt, it should be warm enough to infiltrate.
Hopefully, if everything functions properly.
Any other questions? Dean, you look like you've got a question to face.
Back at the beginning of the process, there was something about an easement up at the northern end with, I didn't really understand it, but you were going to discuss with the abutter at the north.
Yeah, I think, Dean, what that was, was talking about is, I believe, the resident just northwest of us at 114, I think that their walkway encroaches onto this parcel somewhat. Is that not correct, John? Yeah. And so John was just saying that he would be willing to, you know, provide a easement so that that didn't have to go away.
Okay. Is that going to be part of the, will that be in writing?
That can be a condition.
Well, it can be a condition of approval, and where that would be appropriate to be placed would be the recordable condominium site plans, which those get done by a licensed land surveyor after we know nothing's moving and everything is approved. And what they have to do in that, in that case, and forgive me if you already know all this, but they've, they've got to, they take their site plan for every unit that is looking for an occupancy permit. They have to then record the new site plan. All the units at the beginning will say, not yet started. This one, here's the unit you're going to move into, that unit will now be labeled substantially complete, and a set of floor plans will have to be recorded with that for every single one of the 16 units. So that gets updated constantly. That'll be recorded 16 times, I would guess. But yes, that's, that's where it will appear.
Yes.
One quick question. Do you have this letter? It was from April 2nd. It's the UEI notes and your comments, your response to their comments. And I can read it if not, but you might be able to answer it without my having to read that. It's about the architectural drawings, architectural plans. drawings, architectural plans.
I'm not seeing it readily. I'm sure it's in here somewhere, Glenn. What was the, what was the question?
Well, there are two comments, and I'll read the second pair, but, "Comment partially addressed UE, addressed UE acknowledges the note that the roofs will be directed to the reservoir course under the porous pavement. We note that, we note the architectural drawings appear to show gutters. However, the depiction of the gutters does not appear large enough to capture the volume of water from the proposed buildings and convey it from the middle of the back of the building to the front without some form of downspout and connected underground piping. UE also notes that the top of the reservoir course is 21 inches below the surface of the porous pavement, which is not a deep profile to accommodate 100 feet plus of underground piping." And the response from you is, "The latest architectural plans have been provided as part of this submission." And I, I just wondered if, did you adjust something to the latest architectural plans to answer that?
The, the architect did. And, and they, quite frankly, they design all of the roof drainage. We don't do it. We just provide them the, the ultimate terminus location.
Okay.
But yeah, that, that's the way that the porous pavement pond, quote unquote, was designed, and, and it will be piped and delivered to that location.
Okay. The answer seemed a little vague, and I just wondered if, if the answer was satisfied them.
That's because I'm not an architect. I think that we are, we are good with Underwood as far as my last conversation with Dave.
Okay, all right. I'm, this is...
I would like to also note that we, the board, received a letter dated April 2nd from the Jeffrey and Stacy Gusta at 1111 and -113 out Front Street. And we appreciate that, and want to make sure that's added to the record. Any other comments?
I have a question about parking. So I think, I'm just curious about the building, let's see, units D through L. There's two parking spaces in the garage, and then there's also an area outside of the garage that looks like it would fit a car. But those spaces don't seem to be included in the parking counts. And so I guess I'm wondering if those, if that, if any of that pavement could be reduced or allow for the building to move? Like, is that, is all of that pavement necessary?
D through L?
Yeah, the two, the two kind of...
The building's parallel to the sideline.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are essentially, you know, 19 feet long again. So that, that is the, the standard parking depth. And we really endeavored to give each one of those units that additional two spaces on the ground as opposed to just the two within the garage. And of course, they've, they've got to have that kind of room to access the garages anyway. So I don't think removing the pavement in that location is, is actually a realistic option. I guess the point was, we simply didn't, didn't need those to meet the requirements. But yeah, so there, there are essentially, there's gonna be four times 16, or 48 spaces total in this, in this property, inclusive of the garage spaces, Jen.
Right. I think your, your plan says 51 spaces provided.
51?
Yeah. But I guess my question is, if you don't need to provide that parking, when, you know, ideally, we'd have less pavement and more buffer for the neighbors. Could that, could those parking areas be reduced?
Yeah, and, and again, you're, you're gonna need that, you're gonna need that space to get two vehicles into the garage. You see what I'm saying? If, if two vehicles are heading into the garage, you've got to have enough space to cover the entire garage door.
Stacked parking.
Yeah, I'm talking about the depth, not the width.
Oh, I see.
So, so on those buildings, you've got what looks like, you know, 19 feet or whatever depth. The other buildings, you only have, it seems like maybe a shorter depth? I guess I'm just wondering, do you need that full 19 feet?
The one in back actually has 20.
Okay.
Yeah. And unfortunately, I mean, the, the reality is, they, they, you know, the pavement has to be as wide as, as the garage door for two vehicles to get in.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about the width. I'm just, I'm talking about the depth. Like, if we, if, if you didn't have all that depth, I feel like there's, there's ways in which the site could be, you know, the pavement could be reduced, or allow for some of the buildings to, to maybe be, you know, I'm just wondering if all of that pavement is necessary. Do, do we really need four parking spaces per unit? It's definitely not required by the town. And it seems...
Well, and I think what we were driving at is, early on, there were comments about the guest parking. And, I mean, I think the, the idea is to give each unit two guest spaces along with their internal garage spaces. And, you know, again, Jen, we'd be, we'd be playing kind of a game of diminishing returns as you push that drive aisle towards those buildings. Now you're making a more difficult turn for these vehicles, because you think about it, if there are two cars in that garage, and you've got a 16-foot-long car, 15, 17, whatever, you almost need the entire 19 feet to back out before you start making a turn. In other words, the entire vehicle could be out on that driveway before it can back into the road. So I, I just don't see that working out very well from a practical standpoint.
Okay.
Yeah, there is no other guest parking.
You were just challenging.
There's the two, there's additional guest spaces.
Where?
What's a turnaround?
Oh, that's a turnaround. Oh, I thought that was...
Yeah, both, both of those are, are turnarounds in front of the first building and the furthest building. Yeah, the one in the, in the back was essentially provided for the fire department to get trucks and emergency vehicles to get out of there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. It just, I mean, it seems to me like a lot of parking that is probably not necessary and could be reduced. The other question I have sort of similarly related is, now that the three units on the front have been made wider, you do have some room, I think, for like maybe an additional landscaped island in that area? And I was just wondering if that was something that you would consider adding.
Between, say, B and C, perhaps?
Yeah, or A and B.
Pull up the landscape plan for us. I can't, I can't see from this.
So where she's talking?
You can see the cars.
Yeah, John, it's, well, there's your landscape.
Yeah. It's almost easier to see what the cars are.
She's talking about either between those two garages, or between those two garages, doing a landscape island similar to what we've got here. I think that's feasible, Jen.
Okay.
Yep.
Roy Marsette, 14 and 12 Parker, and also, on behalf of the Exodus Cemetery, I'm a trustee there. Jen, I was wondering, do you feel now that there's adequate screening being provided with the plantings on that side and this side?
I mean, I don't, I don't know how you define adequate. I think we would need to have a more concrete set of goals for me to answer that question. I think that, you know, so I can just describe, I guess, what's being provided based on my knowledge of that plant material. I just want to take a quick look at, I think there's still hicks used, but I just want to double check if I can find the planting plan. I lost it.
Christian, isn't there a fence now that goes behind there besides landscaping? If I'm looking at the map, I mean, the plan?
On the northwesterly side, that's correct. So in other words, lag along this property boundary, again, there is a fence for the bulk of it. And as I had mentioned earlier when I was discussing with Gwen, the landscape architect does have some breaks in there to try and save, you know, root matter for significant trees that are virtually right on the line.
Well, I'm looking at sheet five.
Yep.
And I, I think I heard you say there's fencing around the whole, excuse me, project shown on this sheet. So I see a line here with evensley spaced, I'm assuming it's a fence. And it goes all around the back and all around the whole property, as you mentioned earlier. So am I wrong?
Well, the fence in the back is, is the existing...
Is a chain link fence.
That is actually on cemetery property. And what Lees did was just beef up the infill plantings in this location.
Okay.
So there is, there's not an additional fence, because we talked to her about that, and she said, well, you start putting two fences within a couple of feet of each other, there's no real good way to cut anything in there, and they just become weed infested.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair?
So that's an existing fence.
Correct.
I think the fence line you might be looking at on sheet five, though, might be erosion control fence, that the fence line symbol.
What are the small plantings across by the, what did I say, the back, the cemetery side of the project? Jen?
Okay, so those are, those are u's? Those are u's, and it's a U variety called Hixie, so we call it Hicks U. So I think everyone knows what a U is. It's like a very common plant. But Hicks U is a very upright U. So it's, it gets kind of tall, but it stays somewhat skinny. I don't know exactly how wide it gets, but I would say probably four to five feet, if I remember correctly. It might be more like six. So essentially, what the landscape designer has done here is kind of just create like a serpentine row of these upright evergreens, which it's basi, it's, I would describe it as a living fence.
Yeah.
You know, that the fact that they're not in a straight row is kind of nice. It makes it look a little more naturalistic. It, and then mixed with the existing trees, I think, I think it could be nice. So, I mean, whether you feel that's adequate or not, I don't know, but I, I think it's better than it was.
For the cemetery side here?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. And then on the northwest side there, 12 and 14 and 16, are there any additional plantings in that area than what's currently there? You know, yeah, current growth?
Are you asking me?
No.
I, I don't know. I didn't...
She does have a bunch of, of new plantings along that property boundary. You can see the, I believe she's got the existing trees...
They're the larger ones.
Depicted like that. Those, I believe, are existing. Those would be new. Those would be new.
That's existing.
Existing, all new through here, and four or five existing there, plus again, another row right there. And I, again, can't read that. Are those u's as well, Jen?
Where?
The ones right up towards the front between 112 and 114.
They look like...
I'm not seeing a label, but I think that they're the same symbol.
If it's the same symbol, that's...
The same symbol.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
What's the distance between Gill Street and the entrance and exit from your, is it like 100, 150 feet or more? I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking of conflicts with people going out of Gill, where you can take a left on Front Street, and people coming out of this complex and taking a right, if that's, if, I don't know how close they are and how...
Let me see, that might be depicted on the survey plans. So that's Gill. This is gonna be very...
Approximate, okay, okay.
About 100 feet, 100 to 110. And that is from...
From the corner.
Right. Southeast edge of ours to the northeast edge of that road, Gill Street Road.
Which is, it's a bit, I mean, when you, when you want to get out of either one of those, you're gonna be wanting to go quickly because there's a lot of traffic, and it just seems like that is potentially dangerous. But I don't know what we, I don't know what we can do about it, but...
Well, visibility from Gill Street is pretty good in both directions there. That's why I take Gill Street instead of...
Yeah, I do, yeah, I do too.
Linden Street, and see where I'm going, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the traffic consultant, again, issued the same comment about the proposed road, you know, where the, basically over where the existing driveway is, that the site distance is, is pretty, pretty good in both directions. There's not a great deal of vertical change in the road through there. So, you know, like, like we talked about a couple of meetings ago, it's just a matter of making sure that the snow is dealt with correctly for, in winter months.
It's gonna be busy Sunday mornings and other times, and activities going on in the neighborhood.
I'm looking at that measurement, Christian. If you look at, what plan this is, existing condition, I guess. House N on that plan? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yep, I see the existing condition plan, yeah.
I think that's what it is. Is it labeled N? House on Gill, corner of Gill and front?
Yep.
See what I'm talking about?
Yes.
All right, it shows their boundary, not along the road, but their other boundary, but their butter at M at 163 feet.
63.
By nature, the, the angle that Gill takes would make it bigger than 163.
Well, again, I was doing takeoffs with my fingers.
I know, but that's a big difference. That's a big difference.
Based on a reduced plan, so...
You weren't cheating.
110 versus 163 plus. I just think that's a big difference. I just want to mention.
Okay. Yeah, no, you're right. In, in that event, it would be probably closer to 180.
Yeah.
Yep. And again, these plans could have been...
Of course.
I thought they were cut in half.
No big deal.
It could have been reduced.
I'd rather have you go that way.
But there is, there is a circular driveway for that home that comes out of...
He asked about the road. The question...
It's not allowed traffic.
She asked was the road.
From, from Gill, Gill to the new...
Yes, that structure on...
So actually, yeah, you're, you're correct, Aaron. I didn't look at that one that depicted the...
No, you just, I figured you had that. You had to have that.
Oh, I've got it.
I'm surprised you don't have the frontage dimension, actually, but figured you'd have that on your map.
Well, they don't put frontage on lots that they're not surveying boundary on, and obviously, they're not surveying the butter's boundary.
But they did the interior.
They did, yes, they did.
So whatever.
You knew your geography, it's something that helps.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I had a question. On the, the Underwood Engineering people talked about the landscaping plan and said that, asked if you would consider minimizing the planting of trees, or at least the planting of deciduous trees where porous pavement... of deciduous trees, where porous pavement is shown, to reduce clogging of the pavement, I don't see, there has been no change on where those trees are along the driveway there.
And that's simply because this is going to have an, a stormwater inspection and maintenance manual, which dictates and will be part of the condominium documents, as to how they have to deal with the pervious pavement, and there are numbers of things. You have to use a non-steel plow, uh, you, you cannot apply sand, uh, you have to run the blade about a half inch off the ground.
But that's, that's not addressing the issue of the proximity of the trees to the porous pavement.
Well, it, it actually is, because in that I and M, part of the maintenance is that needs to get blown out and vacuumed twice a year. Once in the fall after tree, after leaf down, and once in the spring after winter. So it, it'll be vacuumed twice a year, and, you know, I mean, these people are going to have to deal with this, and if it gets fouled, they're going to have to pay to replace it, so I would venture to guess they're going to be very good stewards, and they're going to have a, a manual as to how you do that. So provided it's maintained properly, that, that should not be an issue.
Other questions? Well, we're ready to look at waivers?
How about the public?
Anybody in the public wish to talk anymore about any other questions we've already discussed? I think we hit the highlights.
It indeed, yeah.
We appreciate your input.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I'm Jeff Garska, 111 to 113, Front Street, and, um, I have two points to make, but before I make those, I, I do know how we could solve every one of these problems, any, every one of the questions that's been brought up. Love the fact that the building in the front has three units. If all of those buildings were three units, we'd have space, we'd have lots of space, green space, we'd have adequate parking, we'd be able to put fencing and, you know, really make this make sense for the neighborhood. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood is adverse to having a development here, we all know, since the zoning is what the zoning is, there's going to be development here. I, I don't, I don't think anybody is under any misconception of that. It's the density of this, and I understand that, that based on the, I think we all do, that based on the C1 designation here, that, um, that it looks like they could have these 16 units, but it doesn't mean that they should. You know, I think the thing that bothers me and, and some of the other folks that have put so much money into their properties, properties that they purchased and renovated older properties, mine, for example, 111 to 113, Front Street, was built as a duplex in 1830, two separate owners on two separate parcels of land, built together and built the house in the front, and within a few years, that was the whole house you see in approximately 1830. And when we purchased that, and I've purchased other properties, by the way, and I own other properties, and I've never demolished any of those. When we purchased that property, we could have, the easy, the easiest thing to do was to raise it, to remove it, but we never even considered that. And almost everybody in this room, everybody, I guess, they never considered that either. So to have somebody come in and say, hey, well, you know, the house needs some work in the front, it's going to impact our bottom line, well, I mean, you know, what, what we all did, it impacted our bottom lines a little bit, but we cared more about the character of the neighborhood and the character of this town. And, and I just think that's more important than a few thousand dollars. So, you know, but based on that, I, I've been, just so you know a little about me, I've been a real estate appraiser for 25 years. And although I'm not a commercial appraiser, I am a residential appraiser, I do a lot of one to four family properties, I've been in thousands of properties, I've been in hundreds of historic properties. And I can tell you, that's a savable building, or it was, until the fire department got there recently. But, um, what everybody is going to be concerned about, and what we're concerned about, is any negative impact on the property value of our properties. We've all put money into these properties, the folks on Gill Street have had a nice view in the back there of a, basically a field of his, of historic property all this time. My view is not going to change that much, this doesn't really have that much to do with me and my property. Our view is going to be kind of the same, to be honest. It's, it's the way this impacts the property, more traffic, increased noise, um, the parking, I don't buy the parking, even, even the way this is, the way this is set up, I've been a hundred, I've been, I've been at least 50 of these developments, really similar to this, and I see what this looks like when it's built. And it's not what, it's not what's being described here. It's going to be a S, S show in the wintertime, I can tell you that. And as an appraiser, I can tell you, and I didn't do a mock-up on this, I didn't, I didn't bring any information, because I don't think it'll matter in, in these proceedings, but I can tell you that the chances are, it does negatively impact the surrounding properties. 25 years I've been doing this, my own company, for 23. I own five other properties. I'm telling you that it's a very good possibility, no matter what anybody tells you, no matter what parking, uh, traffic study, I'll, I'll just go off on a tangent here for a minute, traffic studies, I didn't know until I started coming to these proceedings, how utterly useless those are, to hear these experts come in and talk about how, I mean, just look at the 108 study, uh, you know, it, it blows my mind that you can add 70 units, 140 cars, in this case, probably 34 cars, and there's no impact? It sounds a good tool for a developer to me. I think it just developed, I think these, I think, I think these companies were formed so developers could pay them money to tell towns and abutters that there is no impact, because it's absolute hogwash. And if anybody says anything different, I mean, just live next to one of the properties that changes. That was point number one. Point number two, I brought this up before, and it doesn't seem like.
Go with it quickly, please, because we've heard it before.
What's that?
Go with that quickly, because we've heard it before.
You got it, Chair.
We don't want to stay here all night, we'd like to move ahead, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, I just, I think it's important that people hear.
Oh, I agree with you, but we don't need to hear it ten times, thank you.
But I'll only say it once, sir. R2 versus C1. Nobody's shown me or anybody else any proof that this property, other than the tax map, that this property is a C1 property. I wrote a letter, and because I know we're short on time, and nobody wants to take any more time to try to discuss any of this, apparently, we wrote a letter, and I hope you all read it, I hope everybody else has read it, about a meeting we have with Doug Eastman. Doug was confused a year ago about what the hell this property was. If he's confused whether this is an R2 or a C1 property, how, how am I, or any of these people, supposed to figure that out? I had a meeting with him, he said, hey, the density in this, there's no way they can get any more than five units in, it's, it's an R2 property. I sat there with him, I was behind his desk, looking at the computer. The tax card, R2. The tax bill, R2. So I've got to go to the extra step, figure out that I have to look at the tax map. I told my real estate attorney, when I spoke to him, I, I gave him an overview of this. And the first thing he did was ask me, well, what did they, what did, what did the town attorney say when, when they talked to him about it? And I said, I don't even know if they talked to him about it. I don't know. I'm going to make a suggestion to the board, it's because I love this town. I think somebody should, I think somebody should ask him. Say, hey, this was voted on in 1988, bifurcated properties, to make them into one zone, and there's no proof, other than a tax map, and there's rivaling proof that this is an R2 zone. And if any of these folks looked up, like I did, about this property in the last 10 or 15 years, they would have seen R2. Well, okay, well, if this sells then, I know what the, I looked up the density, I look, I know what the density of the R2 is. So, okay, I could take that. You know, I'm going to go so far as to say that the town information was incorrect, at best, misleading, my God, misleading, guys. So you do what you want, you, you, you can, you know, I think you're on the verge of approving this. But, you know, the O'Neills, they're not the only ones with the means and the patience to try to see this thing through to another level, I can tell you that right now. So you guys do what you want with this. And again, I appreciate the questions, I appreciate the landscape questions, I appreciate everything that, um, the board has done, but the real question here is density and what this parcel really is. That's what I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thoughts, questions?
I'll, I'll speak.
Do we need to discuss that?
I think.
Question?
First of all, thank you. My name is Adele Robertson, I live at 106 Front Street. I'm here tonight to better understand and clarify some of the changes on the 112 proposed development. There are two waiver motions that could be more helpful to me if I clearly understood them. The first waiver is regarding that the roadway and fire lane be less than 24 inches in width. I don't understand what that means. And the second waiver is regarding the stormwater runoff management standards, the waiver and its location. What are the implications and what does it mean, because I'm concerned about the runoff and the grading? I live on the corner of, of, of 106 and Front Street. I don't know what is meant by the five-foot standoff, does that apply to all aspects of the property, the driveway itself, the grading, is there any margin with respect to the five-foot standoff? And there are two other clarifications that I'd like to address. The decision was make, was made to make the entire driveway porous. Prior to that change, there was an area closest to the street and my property line, which was designated cement. The driveway, which directly abuts my property line, is at the initial entrance to all the units, getting to their, their garages, and what is the impact and benefit of this particular change to all involved? And why is this a good thing to change from cement on the end and then porous remaining? And because of my limited vision, and I need to visually, no pun intended, to imagine in my mind, how this project will impact my private, my privacy, my property and me. And because there's, I was speaking earlier this evening, and I was asking, there's a stake with a blue flag, and I think it's, was the, the, the right-hand corner of the building that, when it was four units? And on the other side, I believe it's the Harrington, I think it's your property, on the other side is a stake with a red flag, is that the back end? And realizing that the front street kind of curves a little bit, I'm trying to visualize in my mind the impact and the height and the density of that first building in front, and all the buildings behind, and all that traffic that's going to be coming in and out of that one section. And I think sometimes if you don't live on that street, you forget that there's parking from the church on Sundays, that when the students leave the voc ed, they're speeding down the street and they're quickly making a left-hand turn. It's, it's very dangerous when it's snow and the street is plowed, those banks before the snow trucks take those big giant snow machines and they cut it down. That's a visual thing, and as I mentioned earlier, because of the height of the buildings and how the earth is, and how the snow, how the sun comes in from the Exeter Inn and it's past the very top by nine o'clock, there's no sun on that driveway, in our driveway anyway, and I'm sure my new neighbor's driveway, so when the snow melts, it's ice. So be mindful of that liability that's out there for the residents who could be moving back in there. And lastly, I want to thank the planning board and, for your time and your commitment to our community, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to explain the waivers?
Sure.
For Adele's application?
Yes, please, yes.
So Adele, the, the five-foot waiver, there is a stipulation in the code that there can be no pavement or grading within five feet of property line, uh, which is what caused us to move the driveway two iterations ago, um, away from your property, and effectively making that, uh, a, a non-required waiver anymore. However, I think, uh, the vice chair's position was that, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, we are doing some plantings right next to your property, there is a fence going in right next to your property, it would be, you know, wise, just forward-thinking, to go ahead and actually vote on that waiver, in the event that while that was all going on, while the new plantings were taking place, the fence was going in, if grading somehow changed in some minor way, uh, it would be no issue. The stormwater waiver was specifically because the municipal reviewing engineer requested that we do the first 100 feet of the driveway as a conventional pavement, uh, not the porous as we originally had it designed, uh, which, in order to get that water from, or keep that water from just running onto Front Street, we had to propose a catch basin and a tie-in to the, an existing stormwater catch basin in the street, um, which again, is, is prohibited unless you get a waiver, uh, from the planning board to do that. The, the DPW didn't have a big issue with it, but at the last hearing, we got the takeaway that they wanted the curbing to go away, uh, and the, now the entire roadway is proposed out to the property line to be pervious pavement again, therefore, catch basin is gone, and you will see, there, people will see a lot less runoff towards Front Street than what, what actually gets there now, because all of the roadway goes into the filtration treatment, into the stone reservoir, and ultimately infiltrates. The final one is, uh, the, a road, again, these are just the subdivision regulations for road design. The standard road width in town is 24 feet for a development of this number of units. And what we have proposed is just to reduce that by two feet and create a 22-foot aisle. We reviewed it with our traffic consultant, we reviewed it with the fire department, they all have no issue with it, but in order to actually be able to construct it that way, we have to formally request a waiver to that 24 width, down to 22 feet, uh, to this board and get a favorable, a favorable vote, in order to be able to actually construct it that way. Those, is that clear?
It's clear, but it also squishes, because when I look at that cement, um, post at the very corner of my building, and I take a tape measure and go out five feet, we're still really close to that driveway, to that, to that end of the, you know, to the left-hand side of the driveway.
Like where it's at.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's.
Oh, it's, it's close, but we are now beyond the five feet, which is what the regulation is. Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
Every car is gonna be going by that entrance, right there, for all 16 minutes. Even the Front Street, because it's gotta get to the garages in the back. Just saying that. It's a lot of cars, it's a lot of traffic on that porous road.
Are you taking any more public comment? Or are you gonna close the public session?
I think we need to close the public session this one. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I'd just like to speak very briefly. I know everybody's ready to move on, but I'd just like to sum up. My name is Kristin Nealon, I'm at, a butter at 5 Gill Street, right next to Adele's. And I believe the project is just too dense, by far. And I believe it is totally out of character for the neighborhood that has maintained this character, this unique character for 130 years. It doesn't fit, either physically or conceptually, that project in that neighborhood. It just isn't the Exeter look. This project is way out of scale and not appropriate to this neighborhood. I feel a lot of these issues we talked about are issues because of the density. And they would be solved by a lower-density project. And I think that we should, I appreciate giving that very serious consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do a last call, maybe?
Sure. Anybody else like to speak? I'm gonna close the public session. Okay, I'll close the public session now and bring it back to the board. Any other questions, concerns? Gwen, you got questions on your face?
No, I just, this is one of those projects that
It's hard.
is so incredibly difficult, because I agree, I agree with the butters. I think it's out of character with the neighborhood. I think it's a shame that we're losing the historical nature of a house that could've been resurrected and, and turned into a lovely house. Maybe with some smaller units out back if, if, if the developer was willing to do that. And I think back to something I heard not too long ago about New York City, and back in the 80s, they were gonna tear the Chrysler Building down because they thought it was ugly, and, and what, what, where would we have gone if we had lost that incredibly beautiful building? It's, it's, it's a landmark. It's, it's my favorite building in New York City. And we could've lost that, and lots of other buildings there that were Art Deco buildings that, that are now treasures. And, I mean, the, the owner has a right to do what he or she wishes to do with that property, but to a certain extent, our hands are tied, and, and it's, it's, it makes you feel sick to your stomach that you can't do what in your heart you would like to see done on this, on this lovely piece of property. And it's, it's, it's not, it's not pleasant to be sitting in this seat and know that there's, there's a limited amount that we can do to address those concerns. And it's not the first time we've had to deal with something like this, and never feels good.
We all set with the zoning issue. Hey, Dave thinks, Dave seems comfortable with that, that that the zoning allows what they wanna build and not with the neighbor across the street thinks.
Dave, I mean, Dave's weighed in on it.
Yeah. But I think he.
And Doug Eastman's weighed in on it. And they've said that it's zoned as presented by the developer, not a tax card. I mean, I, I, in my work, I've seen mistakes with assessors' cards, and in my experience, the maps take precedent. We could easily do a condition of verifying that.
Yeah.
You know, that would be a pretty smart way to go about it.
I think that would.
Wouldn't take a lot.
I'm just not comfortable.
No, councilway.
Right.
Find out in two years that we were wrong.
Sure. Right.
I mean, to have a, having a butter, or maybe somebody who is looking, in the past was looking at buying a house on Gill Street, and maybe they did go to the tax records, and maybe they did look at that and say, oh, it's an R2.
Yeah.
We're safe, we're not gonna be facing a major development.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we've, we've seen situations where it's zoned for something, and the zoning gets shelved, and hundreds of units go in too, so.
Right.
Unfortunately, there is no guarantee there even, whatever the map says, or whatever the assessors' card says. You can go in and get a variance, because we've had that come to us before.
Right.
Right? So, right here in River City. You know what I mean? So.
I'd love to have it as a condition.
I think make it, yeah, if we go forward, I think it has to, should be a condition. It's a pretty simple solution to that concern, and I think it should be in there.
Yeah. I agree.
I have written down. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's very difficult, because that record shows that.
Right.
Published record.
No, it is confusing. You see mistakes, it happens.
And if Doug thought.
And I'd have to, uh.
As an R2.
Right.
Say the same that, that.
Why wouldn't you believe it?
Yeah.
At that point, so.
I would have to say it's the same as what Gwen says, and I thought it was very well expressed in, in our letter, April 2nd here. Very clearly stated, and thank you for that. It is crowded. Still looks like a New Jersey motel to me. But I also think about what kind of a neighborhood is it gonna be in itself? There's not much grass there, and I have the cookout on. I, it, you know, I'm just, I'm not as thrilled about this, but, you know. But there are, you know, we have to deal with what we have.
Well, I think, I think that's all extremely valid, and we're in those situations all the time. You know, and we are part of the process. And we're trying to make sure things are handled appropriately going through the process. But the other thing I would say, and I'm all about the history and the historical nature of this town. The reality is, you do have varieties of the style of housing all throughout town. It's not vanilla, you know? And that's, that's pretty typical, and actually part of a healthy community, not having the same.
That's true.
Style everywhere. You know? So, there's a, there's two sides to that.
Yeah.
I favor the older and the styles of the past, and that's why I love this town. But there is, there are people with very different tastes than I have, that like modern.
There has to be room for all of them.
Right.
Variety's the spice of life, they say.
Yeah.
Could I ask? Please.
I wanna be, I wanna be clear on what that, the condition on the zoning says, and what does it require, and who, if that's a condition, who does what?
Well, we have to propose any conditions, right? So it has to be worded out, that is part of it, for sure. But my thought was, just as a condition of, if we are approving, one of the conditions is that we just verify the zoning as presented by the developer.
We, the town, who does that?
The town. They've already presented it as what they believe it is, so. I mean, it kinda happened already, but just make us feel better.
Well, the town council, Gwen just started to say that's something they would do, could do.
I don't know if they have already or not. That I don't know. David would know the answer to that.
Would you suggest that that be, that's what I would.
Sure.
Yep, yep. Okay, make that a, excellent. Jen?
Yes.
You're looking blank eyed at the moment. Kinda here early, see?
I've been in meetings in this room for too long.
I think all of us are.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think my, I kind of agree with what's already been stated about the density. My, to me, it's all about, I think the density really shows itself when it comes to like, look at all the space we're giving to cars. I, you know, like I've already said, I think it's more parking than is needed, and I think generally as a, as a rule, as we're, you know, looking for paces to put more housing in Exeter and densifying and doing infill housing and all of that, like, we have to realize that not everyone who lives in these dense developments is gonna be able to have a giant truck that they want. Like, like, they don't need to have four parking spaces per unit, like, just as, you know. I'm going out on my soapbox a little bit, but it's just like, like, the amount of space on the site that's being given over to the car is, I think, ludicrous. So generally, I think, I, I wish I had seen a site plan with less parking, with, you only need to provide what's required. This is exceeding excessively. I would like to see more green space, to your point. But, you know, I think like Gwen said, like, there's only so much we can.
Jen, I don't see a lot of flexibility in the pavement on this project, because two of the spots are your access to the garage.
Yes.
All right, so you could, I mean, I'm like, not to like redesign this, but let's say, you know, take unit F, for example. Your two spots could be one in the garage, one outside of the garage, and then that planting island could get twice as wide.
Yeah, okay.
You know, there's, there's ways to do it. The depth, I don't think needs to be as deep. Maybe, maybe, you know, the engineer has done a turning study, and yes, it absolutely needs to be that deep for a typical passenger vehicle. I, I don't know, I haven't seen that study, so I don't know. But I just, I just feel like we really need to look at, like, the impact that parking our vehicles, our four vehicles per household is having on our environment, and just as a general rule, like, start to get a little smarter about it.
Jen, don't you think a lot of that's guest parking? Because there is no guest parking anyplace else.
Two parking spots are required. And like, two or four guest parking spots.
Yeah, there would be four, because it's one per four units.
Right. So, you know, they've exceeded the parking by 10, 10 cars, and I lost my parking counts, but, I'm looking at, that's interesting. So Plan Number Five, Sheet Number Five, has a different, has 16 units. Oh no, that's density, I don't know.
We're at 16.
I thought we were at 17.
No, they dropped it.
Oh, it's down to 16, okay. So another one I was looking at a minute ago had 17. Regardless.
Jen, you talked about another landscape aisle, which A and B, or B and C? Do you wanna get more specific on that? As a potential condition?
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, applicant shall provide an additional landscape aisle at, does that building have a number? Building one?
Building one.
Okay.
And I would suggest to put it between B and C, further away from the drive aisle, the main drive aisle.
Yeah, less impact on the mail kiosk.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any reason why we can't do that? And the other, like.
Could unit B have the parking?
They've got it, they've got some.
Towards the driveway, so it'd have a, almost a whole vehicle width of a little aisle there.
Again, four units.
Yeah, it's stuck in there.
We talked about putting between two and three.
B and C'd be fine. I wish, again, there's other ways to eliminate one or two units elsewhere. I mean, they did a nice job up front, but we'd make the, at least the five-unit building, a four-unit building. Henry.
They could make a larger aisle. So they could make the landscape aisle bigger and eliminate. Well, they have to get out there.
That's the problem, it's the design of the building.
So what is the minimum? Parking?
Depth?
Parking number for this project?
Yeah.
Minimum would be two per unit plus four visitor stalls, so 32, 36.
36. But the challenge you have is the access.
Well, that's just it. How do you turn the vehicles from the right-hand lane into those buildings?
So the only way to really shrink pavement practically would be to reduce your garage count, like, from a two-car garage to a one-car garage, and say, have two spots for that unit, one in the garage and one in front of that spot, right? That's really the only
That would be.
Practical way to do it. I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying.
Yes, I agree with you.
And that would open up lots of possibilities for grass.
Yeah, that's really the only way. Because you have to get to the garage, if you have the garage, right? I mean, that, that's a preference of the applicant, really. I mean, the porous pavement kind of alleviates the stormwater issue if you have asphalt instead, right? That's impervious. So the, the grass versus the porous pavement is null.
Looks better.
It does. Well, that's what we're getting at, yeah.
Christian, is there any, any data, information about porous pavement and heavy vehicles? Because I'm concerned about it. Your local trash picker-up-a-guy has not a two-wheel truck these days anymore, more than a pickup truck, and those are heavy machines.
Yeah, those should not be an issue. I mean, if you were talking about tractor-trailers, and really, when, when the weight of the vehicle becomes a question with, with as far as they've come with the structural capability of porous pavement these days.
Yes.
When it really becomes a question mark is when you've got a tractor-trailer, and that trailer starts turning.
Yes.
Because you're swinging around and pushing that massive trailer with god knows how many tons of
Whatever.
whatever in the back of it. Then, then that would be, you know, a problem. But a box vehicle, you know, passenger cars, the, the, that pavement has, has come a long way in the last 20 years.
So backing in and driving out would be fine. He shouldn't make a turnaround with one of those trucks, because those wheels will do the same thing as that trailer thing.
Yeah, and quite frankly, what we did over at the, the extension off JD Hill several years back was they provided for the construction vehicles a, I think it was just a two-inch, very thin layer of conventional pavement until all the foundations were poured, until all the building materials were in there. This was, this was an idea that was presented to us by Tom Severino, and he presented it to the technical review committee when we had our pre-construction hearing, and everybody thought it was a fantastic idea. And you basically just create little rounded swales on either side of that that collect the stormwater that runs off during the construction. And at the end of it, they rip it up, they rip up any silt that may have gotten into those side swales, and they put in the porous pavement, and it functions beautifully. That, that was how we dealt with that one.
Yep.
You know, the, the idea would not to be have this pervious paved with concrete trucks, with lumber trucks coming in and out, in and out, in and out all day.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Haven't been up to the.
sharing circle, I was losing the name of the, the road.
Oh, a few pounds. Same problem, yep.
Seventy pounds.
Yep. Well, a thin asphalt road, poorly built, it's gonna be the same.
Sure.
There's nothing underneath it, yeah. Especially on wetlands.
And you wouldn't anticipate a fire truck coming out here very frequently?
Yeah, yeah.
Seventy people.
Emergencies, right? They go in.
Yeah, they go, they're everywhere. An ambulance goes there.
Well, we wanna deal with, any waivers?
Yeah, that's probably what we should do.
Ready to go with the waivers and start on those? So Christian, let's start with the waivers, please.
Which one do you want to start with first, Mr. Chairman?
Well, what we have from David and his note is the roadway and storm management.
no longer providing a catch basin to tie into that.
So let the minutes reflect that, that stormwater management request is disappearing because of the construction.
You've talked with Dave about that one, about the stormwater management.
Unfortunately, he left before I could speak with him about it, but that was what was triggering the waiver.
Right.
Was the installation of that catch basin.
Christian, you happen to mention that to Dave, or vice versa?
No.
Nope, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I mean, if you want to vote on it, just like Aaron said it would be a kind of a preemptive safety clause, with the, I'm perfectly happy for you to do it.
Then let's do that. Then we'll cross that T and dot a D on it.
You gotta make them, present it.
No, he's got to present it, of course, yeah. Pull the string there a little bit.
And my waivers are lost in a pile of papers.
Oh, well, let's see now.
Just let me thumb through them.
I mean, that one, to me, seems completely unnecessary, but...
What's that?
The stormwater one, to me, seems completely unnecessary.
Well, as I say...
You're not doing the work.
The sole purpose we had to draft that was because the, through technical review, the towns engineers requested that we change that...
The catch basin.
To pervy, to impervious pavement or conventional pavement, and that, yes, triggered the, triggered the need for a catch basin tie into the street.
Did you not think we were voting on waivers tonight?
Oh, no, they're in here.
Click, click, click.
If you wanted to save some time and you happen to have them, that would help me.
We can always move on to the next hearing.
We could. Table for ten minutes. Thomas, we have the same packet with us.
Engineer.
Yeah, that's true. I had it right here. Can't get away from this guy.
I have it, thank you.
So we're looking for, yeah, these are the waivers.
Not here.
Tristan.
That's it. The next page.
I knew I had that someplace.
They always do. Yes. Where you been?
Oh, yeah, this was the one that was put in after the fact. This was for the stormwater. So are we, or are we not going to deal with the stormwater?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, we're going to do it. All right. So we respectfully request a waiver to the Towns, Town of Exeter's Site Plan and Review and Subdivision Regulations 9.3.2.7, which restricts redevelopment projects from discharging to a municipal sewer, stormwater system in volumes greater than discharge under the existing conditions. We feel that the waiver is justified, as the proposed connection to the municipal drainage system will have a de minimis impact on the municipal water system, as the increased flow to the system is .12 cubic feet per second and a volume of .01 acre-feet, approximately 436 cubic feet, in a fifty-year storm event. That's the largest one that we have to evaluate under your regulations. And this direct connection to the municipal drainage system is preferred option to allow stormwater to flow down from the driveway to the catch basin one hundred and eighty-five feet away. In discussing the proposed connection and the increased flow with the Public Works Department, they agreed that this low flow and volume increase will not have a negative effect on the overall system, therefore granting the waiver will not be detrimental to public health, safety, welfare, and, nor could it be deemed injurious to other properties. The conditions upon which this request are made are expressly due to the fact that during the review and comment period, the driveway near the entrance was requested to be revised from porous to traditional pavement, resulting in an increase in impervious area as a driveway is required to be widened as part of the proposed development. The existing curb cut is being utilized and widened and is unique to the parcel and not generally applicable to other properties. Due to the location of the curb cut for the existing driveway, the proposed driveway was placed in the same location but is wider than the existing driveway. Originally designed as porous pavement, this section of conventional pavement, as requested by the Towns Consulting Engineer, is resulting in the minimal increase in peak flows and volumes. A denial of this waiver would result in hardship requiring the increased flow be mitigated in another way, if not collected and directed to the municipal system. The stormwater would simply flow onto Front Street and into the right-of-way. The waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, as proposed development and resulting increase in volume will not impact current municipal drainage system as agreed upon by the Department of Public Works. The proposed waiver does not propose to vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. This is demonstrated by the facts cited above, along with the absence of such language in the zoning ordinance or master plan.
Any questions on that? Some would like to make a motion.
I can make a motion on that. Stormwater management for redevelopment standards waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Stone Arch Development Planning Board Case Number 24-17 for a waiver from Section 9.3.2.7 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations Regarding Stormwater Management Requirements for Redevelopment be approved.
Is there a second, please? Marty, thank you. Any discussion? We need to do a, what, hand vote on these? So let's start with you, Gwen, please.
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
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 An amiss vote, motion carries. Roadway and fire lanes less than twenty-four inch width, please.
Yes, well, I'm going to be riffing and scatting on this one, because I still cannot find it. But anyway, I know why, I mean, the intention of reducing that is this is a private entrance to a small, I mean, I know I'm not going to get likes for saying that, but this is a relatively small development, and the fact that we're going with pervious pavement, the whole idea here is we understand, yes, there's, there's a lot of lock coverage. So we are trying to reduce that pavement width to twenty-two feet, which is perfectly adequate for emergency vehicle access, perfectly adequate for the residential access, and by virtue of the fact that it is pervious pavement, you know, we think that's, that's the best we can do to get access, safe and, and viable access into this project. We think, and, and quite frankly, the two-foot width of pavement, nobody's even going to notice at the end of the day. Oh, and by the way, the fire chief obviously reviewed this, as did DPW, as did Underwood Engineers during the TRC hearing, and nobody had an objection.
Thank you. That's good. Anybody like to make a motion on that one?
You want to go?
No. Go ahead.
Okay, there you go, okay. Roadway and fire lanes less than twenty-four width, twenty-four feet in width waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Stone Arch Development Planning Board Case Number 24-17 for a waiver from Section 9.14.1.9, excuse me, of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to permit the proposed roadway and fire lanes to be less than twenty-four feet in width be approved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Again, it'd be a hand vote, let's start down with you, Dean.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, an amiss vote. Now, have you got?
His decision on Number Three.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's go ahead and take it up for a vote. I mean, I think that makes sense, and, you know, essentially, the, we have eliminated, in Dave's opinion, the need for the five-foot grading and pavement separation from adjacent parcels, however, understanding that there may be disturbance for installation of the fence for screening for the neighbors, installation of the vegetation, the trees and shrubs, for, again, additional screening and beautification for the neighbor's property, we would, we would request that that, that variance be granted, certainly, the fact that we have relocated the driveway to five and a half feet off of that property line, you know, would indicate that we likely do not need it, but in the event that when the plantings get done, when the fences get done, if some minor level of regrading happens to take place, we would, we would then be covered. And certainly, it ought to be very clear that that's not going to be detrimental to any properties, because the whole point of what would be changing grade would be for excavation to install tree ball roots and fencing. That benefit the butters directly.
Okay, have you got it figured out? I was trying to find Dave.
I can do a motion on it, it's, you have to, it's not in the packet.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I ask a question?
Yours. Clarification, so I think I know the answer to this.
The answer to this, but if, if we grant this waiver, it does not allow him to move that driveway within the five and a half feet.
No, no, it's to change the grading.
Right, it would have to stay where it's shown on the approved plan.
Okay.
So if they get out there and there's like a foot or two extra soil, you know what I mean?
We didn't do something inadvertently.
No, definitely.
Good question.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, as I think about it, Aaron probably has a good point, because we're dealing with two-foot contours and stick-on-ground topo.
Yeah.
There could be a little bump here or there, yeah, so.
All right. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Stone Arch Development Planning Board Case Number 24-17 for a waiver from Section 9.3.6.4 for grading within five feet of an exterior property line be approved.
Second? Moved and seconded. Gwen?
Aye.
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 So are we ready for a...
I don't know, would we discuss this plan more?
Multi-state plan approval. Oh, conditions.
Yeah.
We should talk about condition, all right, yeah.
So I have, in my notes...
Kristen has the, the...
She has the standard stuff.
The standard ones.
Did you take notes, Kristen?
I did.
What did you end up with for extra conditions that came out of our hearing?
The six-foot fence behind Nine Gill Street, I don't know if that's necessary, because it does show on the plan.
Is that the one that they referenced in the letter? The cedar versus vinyl?
Vinyl.
And they're offering vinyl that's on the plan? I think that's okay.
Okay, so not that one. Add a detail on tree protection during construction.
Yeah.
An easement in favor of 114 Front Street to allow continuance of the existing walkway.
Yeah.
Applicant shall provide additional landscaped island between units, and I missed whether it was B and C.
B and C.
B and C.
Building One, B and C.
And Town Council to verify the zoning is accurate as presented by the developer.
Yeah. That's all I have.
I don't have any others.
Did you have anything else?
No, this, Town Council, so it would be their decision anyway to, to take it to the attorney, right?
Whose decision?
The, the Town Council would have to, if, we had, we had talked about having the town attorney verify, and you use the words Town Council.
Ah, okay.
I mean, but it has, probably has to go through them anyway, right?
I consider those the same.
Yeah. I don't know what you...
Not, not, not Town Council, like, select board, but...
Oh, okay.
Town's attorney.
That council, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Did you think she didn't mean the attorney?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I took that as attorney, but maybe just say attorney.
I'll say attorney.
Yeah.
How about the standard ones? Could you read those, too?
Yep.
She looks excited about that.
Well, we got public here, they're going to hear all of them.
Yes, I agree. An electronic as-built plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in a DWG or DXF file format and in NAD 1983 State Plane New Hampshire FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. Number two, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any work commencing. The following must be submitted for a review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting, a SWIP stormwater pollution prevention plan, if applicable, and a project schedule and cost estimate. Number three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Condition four, the inspection and maintenance manual log form and the inspection checklist and maintenance guidance infiltration pond inspection checklist in the stormwater management and BMP inspection and maintenance plan dated December 2024 shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January 31st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of, condition of approval. Item five, the annual report section of the stormwater best management practices inspection and maintenance plan shall be revised to be consistent with condition four above. The annual report section currently states that the annual report will be prepared and submitted to the town engineer upon request. Item six, all condo docs and documents, including declaration and bylaws, shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to signing the final plans. Condominium docs to include maintenance requirements for pervious pavement and all other stormwater practices shown on the plans. In the event the town planner deems that review is needed by the town attorney, this review shall be at the applicant's expense. Number seven, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer, water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, including third-party inspections, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Item eight, all landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced, no later than the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Item nine, all outdoor lighting, including security light, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. And item 10, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool cited the website. The PTAP submittal must be accepted by Public Works prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Okay. Oh, is there all the, includes the others that we discussed as well?
You brought those up, yes.
Okay. Then I'm open to have, a motion?
People are going to be fighting to make this motion.
He's the bad guy.
I shouldn't make light of that, that's...
I'm going to make one of the newbies set it up.
It's your initiation.
I used to call it hazing, Marty.
I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
She took him off the hook.
All right. I move at the request of Stone Arch Development Planning Board Case Number 24-17 for a waiver from Section 9.14.1.9, excuse me, of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations Number 24-17 for multifamily site plan approval be approved with the conditions as read by Kristen Murphy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion or discussion about the motion? All right. Would you like to begin?
Aye.
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 Before I vote, I do want to say I appreciate all the extensive input from the public.
Absolutely.
We did do our best to listen to your concerns, and I think the developer did their best to address them. I think the saving grace of, for you in a neighborhood of this approval is I think you have a very conscientious and credit-worthy developer who's putting in a product that you don't appreciate, but I think it will be a quality project. I approve.
Thank you.
I approve as well.
Gwen?
Reluctantly.
I think maybe it isn't gonna impact it, but I think, I think based on a lot of the arguments that have been presented tonight and maybe particularly Jen's about the pavement and the volume of pavement on this site, I think I will, I, I think I'll say no.
Okay. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six, and one no. Motion carries. Thank you for your time. Again, thank you to the public so much. You are important to us, and it's a.
Good luck with your project.
Your last.
Yeah. No, not after 10.
Probably.
I mean, I know. Yours isn't a big.
Roll the dice.
I know. We could potentially.
We could, I mean, if.
I don't think that's a long hearing.
I don't.
It shouldn't be too bad.
I don't know how safe this is.
I know. That's the question. We're not that far into it.
It's much easier.
Yeah.
We did our site.
I'd hang in. We'd tell you not to if we thought you were. I think with that in mind, though, we'll try to hang in for you, too.
Can we, can we reverse the order?
Can.
Since they already go.
Well, Kristen, you know.
Can, but I mean, it's usually in the order of application.
Blessings.
And I don't know if anybody here for either one.
I have mine, yep.
You give me the same one?
No.
Just kidding.
Bite your back.
This one has John's spit on it.
This is, thank you, this is, just to speed things up here.
Yeah, you needed an app.
Next case is the application of Stone Arch Development for multi-purpose, excuse me, multifamily site plan review for the proposed construction of six-unit townhouse style residential condominium developed along the associated, along with associated parking and site improvements. Sub of car, property is located at 57 Portsmouth Avenue in a C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Tax map parcel number 73-14 and is planning case number 25-1. And I would ask, Kristen, if this is barely be heard, I believe that.
Yes, it is.
Okay, then I'd look for motion to open this case.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
And seconded. So voice vote, those in favor, yes, yes?
Yes.
Aye, opposed, abstention. We've got, we now have started the clock. So, Kristen, back to you again.
Okay, so this application was originally scheduled for the March 27th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. However, due to time restrictions, the board voted to table the presentation of the application to the April 10th, 2025 meeting.
I think because Lane got angry that I dropped my phone.
The board also scheduled a site walk this morning at 8:00 AM. Application and plans and supporting documents dated January 28th, 2025 were provided for your review. A technical review committee meeting was conducted February 20th, 2025. A copy of the Underwood engineers' comment letter dated February 18th was also provided for your review. TRC from town departments were minimal and so noted by the developer and engineer at the meeting. The applicant obtained several variances for the proposed construction of this project from the ZBA at their November 19th meeting. Copies of the ZBA notice of decision and minutes from that meeting were included in your packet for review. Applicants requesting two waivers from the board's site plan review and subdivision regulations in conjunction with the application. Please see the waiver request from Beals Associates dated January 28th. The applicant submitted revised plans and supporting documents March 19th, and those have been provided. At a minimum, I would suggest the planning board consider a vote on accepting the plans as complete for review purposes, and if deemed complete, hold the public hearing to get input from the public. He has provided motions in your packet, and I am here in Dave's.
Kristen, you're still awake over there?
I am, sir, and unfortunately, you're gonna have to still listen to me.
Okay.
My apologies, I am still Christian Smith, engineer of Beals Associates, presenting the applicant on this project. As, as mentioned in Dave's memo, you know, I think the first thing that, would you prefer that I go ahead and choose the project, or do we want to have a vote on completeness of application? You already, you already voted for.
We already accept, yeah.
My apologies. I guess I was not awake, Mr. Chairman. You caught me. Okay. So the proposal here is to create a six-unit townhouse-style condominium situation, all residential with two-three unit buildings at the reference parcel located at 57 Portsmouth Avenue. The driveway entrance will be somewhat expanded, though we're actually reducing the, the actual entrance opening size. That was discussed with the DPW at the TRC, and essentially, as, as you, those of you who made it out to the site walk this morning could see, where we provided a, a nice fill-it rounding, it's just kind of an angle that goes all the way to the end of the sidewalk. So our proposal now is to provide that additional fill-it, extend the, the sidewalk to the end of that with a tip-down, the appropriate handicapped access crossing, and bring in, again, a 22-foot wide aisle to serve these parcels. Again, we've been through this with the, the technical review committee. Fire department did not take exception to access, and as I mentioned, the folks that were out there this morning, we were told by the, the fire inspector that very likely if they were fired either of these buildings, they would actually stop on Portsmouth Avenue in the shoulder, hook up to the hydrant that's on our side of the street, and just run hose back and fight them. They're probably not gonna bring a truck in right next to a building that's fully involved.
Too close to it.
Yeah. But in any event, the units are proposed to be served with underground utilities, municipal water and sewer services, a formerly proposed catch basin tie-in to the existing catch basin that is located right there, has been eliminated based on our first run-through with Underwood Engineers' review memos, and by virtue of that, we have proposed an infiltration trench along that back of the building, the southerly side of that building, and then the southerly side of the turnaround in the drive aisle to the garages. You can see the site is, is fairly tight, but again, our landscape architect has gone through and tried to do what she can for plantings that made sense and will likely survive in that rather busy location. And aside from the two waivers, I think that the, the project with the zoning relief that we received meet the letter of the code, and I do have a couple of things, once I get through the, toward the end of the, of this hearing, that I just want to run by the board just to, just to get opinion. We do have a second letter from Underwood, which is much reduced, but I, I do want to have a couple of answers from you guys before I go back with, with that response.
Questions? Thoughts?
Building, building two, the one in the back.
Yes.
For sake of argument. The front of that building or the front of the unit faces the back, right?
Correct.
I don't, I don't see a walkway to get to those doors.
I think it is, I don't believe that there is a walkway there, and that's simply by virtue of the fact that it's, it's the retaining wall and then the stone drip edge beyond that. So they would just be accessing essentially grass area, or if, if you look at it as well, Mr. Gruder, it gets pretty steep back there.
You might need steps.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I don't know that that's, that's something that's, that's gonna be worthwhile. I mean.
But if that's, if that's, if I buy that unit, I live there, I, I want all my guests coming in through the garage?
Sure.
I don't think so.
There's a, there's a service door in the garage. So there's a garage doors and there's a service door.
Yeah, there's a mandor in the garage.
I don't see, is the door built into the garage door?
Is it? The front building's on, yeah, that's the front building.
That was, that was one of the considerations when we were, when we were looking at the architectural.
Could you use a microphone?
Yeah, I, I, I'm missing someone.
TV audience is watching.
Get introduced yourself, too, please.
Robert Baldwin, part of the design team for, for the project. So one of the things that, when we were going through the architecturals, going off of Kristen's plan, if, if we could go to the, the picture before this one, I think it is, go back one more. We didn't have any space to have adequate parking that, that each unit would, would want, and provide a mandor. The only place we could provide a mandor is in the, the end units. So where we have the, the sloping grade coming off of the, the two visitor spots, we thought it'd be a nice addition if we could put granite steps going up to an impervious, a previous walkway that would run along the back where you could have a mandor for, for each one of the, the units.
That, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. I know which, I know which page you were probably looking at.
Yeah.
It's not in here.
I mean, they need a, a way of regress as well.
Right.
But that walkway isn't on any of your pictures or drawings.
I'd like to see where the earth line, the, the back and around the sharp slopes where those come in against the structure, what's happening between the structure and the retaining wall.
Yeah, if you go back one.
Yeah.
There we go.
So essentially, that's the, the grade of, of the back, and it's hard to see because the sun's facing the other direction.
Yeah.
But there is a, a walkway that runs along the back, and it slopes down, so you have steps along that walkway.
Where is it? I don't, it's supposed to be on our, Kristen?
Yes.
Maybe we got the wrong ones.
It's on the rendering, but it's not on the plan. Not on the plan.
That's right.
Oh, I don't see it here.
It's the last frame.
I mean, how, where's the walkway?
There's no walkway. You already said that. No, that's what.
No, it's on the, the landscape plan. It's on the render.
Oh, it is?
There's a walkway right there. It's on the under.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there is. Look. See the coloration?
Dark, yeah.
It's in the shadow.
Little thing.
Asphalt.
The shadow.
You said, you talked about a previous walkway.
Yeah, so as you, as you come around towards the visitor spots, as the grade comes down, you'd have granite steps, platform, and then kind of, you'd follow the grade around the building, essentially.
I would think that'd be necessary. Fire department must require that anyway, right?
The, the mandor on the.
Whatever, it's front door.
I think it's a good practice, whether it's required or not, but.
I think it would have to be.
Well, you could get out a window.
Once you sprinkle a building, a lot of the rules are wiped out, seriously, so these are sprinkled.
So there's some leveled ground behind the building, but not, what, 10 feet wide backyard? And then we hit the.
Yeah.
Probably that much.
Yeah, the level ground is probably closer to five.
Yeah.
Before it slopes up into that, into that hill, kind of at the top that we saw out there today, John.
Right. One thing I, I would say that back area, I thought, you might have, and I mean, it's obviously up to you, but you might have potential, I thought, to have like a balcony or a decking on the second floor of that rear building. Because actually, it's not, it's, you know, it is open space, and I, I think one of the things people do want is to be able to get outside, even if it's on a deck, on a sunny day, from their place, you know what I mean? Not have to go to the park or something. I mean, it's just, there's not a lot of opportunity in this particular project. It's obviously a very limited lot to have much outside space. Just a thought.
Well, it looks like there's, again, the picture that shows the walkway, looks like there's a door in this building.
Yeah, the doors are there, but getting out the door.
Suggesting making, yeah.
You're accompanying them in that.
So could, could you explain again? You have the walkway in the back.
I hear you.
And when you get to the corner of Unit D, how do you get down to the, to the driveway? Sure. Kristen, do you mind going to the, the landscape plan? And. Perfect, yeah. So right on the side of, of Unit D, right there would, would be basically, I think there's a four-foot change in elevation from the edge of pavement to the corner of the building. So essentially, you would be, you'd be coming up probably four granite steps to a platform, making a 90-degree turn, and going up the, the side of the building, following that slope, and then, and then you'd have granite steps as you need to get up to the, to get up to the, the mandor on the back. Do, do you need any type of wheelchair accessibility back there? No, no, townhouse.
What's a mandor? I'm sorry.
Just a, a regular door.
Okay.
Typically, they're.
Is there a woman door?
I'm sorry.
Man door, a woman door, thank you.
Typically referred to as, to doors that are kind of adjacent to a garage door.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that you know it's not a car door.
Okay.
It's a person door.
Yes.
Maybe a dog.
A door for people.
There you go.
That's the last time.
I've never heard it before.
Getting into pronouns, be careful.
If there's only five feet between the back of that building and where the slope starts to, where it starts, you've got plant, how are you gonna fit a sidewalk and, or a walkway and those plantings or the?
Well, the plantings are simply gonna be on the slope.
So they're.
So they'll be up higher than the entrance elevation of that door.
Okay.
Just one row of plantings.
Yeah, and, and all those trees, you can kind of see the tree line on the presentation plan that we were seeing up at the top of the hill. Those are actually on the apartment property.
Right, right.
And Kristen, those, those plants are on the incline, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are, those are on the slope, and I'm pretty sure she selected those, you know, to drive.
So what would help would know what the property lines are, because I don't see the detail of the walkway around there. And if these are on the slope, that's okay, but where does the property end? At the back of the lot? End on the residential side?
You want to see that on the, on the renderings, Mr. Chairman?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
We're doing a lot of talking here, and I don't see what we're talking about.
Yeah, Rob, Rob and I will, will coordinate, we'll, we'll get that depicted on there, and I'll make sure that.
Appreciate that.
When we go through and put some serious thought into how those, you know, walks, stairs may work, that, that all of our minds jive.
Perfect.
Obviously, lighting.
Yeah.
The lighting is actually. The lighting is actually on there, it is simply building-mounted.
Building-mounted.
There is no full-mounted lighting.
Right here on the first page.
Yeah, and we should have a lighting plan deeper into the plan set as well.
So in, while you're on lighting, the front of the building that faces Front Street, you have three lights way up in the eaves.
Portsmouth Ave.
Yeah, Portsmouth Ave. What did I say?
Front Street.
Is it after nine?
Yes.
It is.
I'll help you out, Quinn, don't worry.
Way up here. I don't see the purpose behind them, other than to maybe be casting light further off the, just seems like a really odd place to have lights.
That's the previous, Robert does all the rendering, so if you probably recognize, when we did the Federated Auto, he did the renderings, he did Front Street, and he also does these as well, and he's a partner in this, but I think that's the previous rendering of it, right?
There should be, Gwen, there should be another version of that, that earlier version.
Was that, okay, it just happens to be the one I missed the notes on.
Someone reports me here.
Yeah, do you have this one?
Totally different.
She got that this morning.
I did.
Yeah, that's different. That's the new one.
This is the new one?
That's the new one.
Correct, yeah.
It's the one we got handed today.
Yeah, we like the other one better.
Do you really?
Yeah, I do. I just don't like the lights up at the top. It's just got character, it's got, it's, the facade is varied, it's, it's a pleasing image to me.
Where it is character, it's probably not quiet.
You may be right, you may be very right.
I think what we found from the, I think what we found from the previous version was, you don't have much room from the front of the building to where you start to meet the sidewalk, and I think the concern was is that you're making that room a little bit smaller than, you know.
Okay.
I stayed during the sidewalk this morning, we talked about the walkway and where the front of the building is going to start, so it's.
Maybe you could put that on Front Street.
A comfortable mount lines up to the other building, so it's good there.
Start over again.
I thought the spacing was pretty good.
I'm having a hard time understanding what's happening at Portsmouth Avenue, like, with the curb cut and the radius and the sidewalk. Can you just kind of like walk us through that?
Sure. And I think if I go down, you can see on this, this was done before we got that, before we got that impetus.
Before you got the rounded curb.
Yeah, I don't know what that blue line is, but in any event, Jen.
So you're highlighting the area.
Existing curb cut, and, you know, we just widened it out to make the 22-foot aisle once you got to this point, and then, she did this planning plan before we had our meeting with technical review, and you can see what we've done is we've extended that, that former line went something like this, it was just an angle line. We have provided a fill-it radius, and we are extending the sidewalk to that point so that it connects with the sidewalk that basically is in front of the Hampton Inn property.
So can you point to where the sidewalk is? That's what I, I think that's what's confusing me.
Sidewalk is right here.
Okay, so that's the sidewalk, so then what's the area that's not green but is between the sidewalk and the.
That is just green area, but it's off our property.
Oh, okay, so that's going to be green.
That's in Route 33 right away, yeah. And this morning, we saw, we kind of found the location of where that little connection from the residential walkways connects out to the municipal sidewalk.
And then, so why is the fill-it going to the, like, it seems to me like, the, the fill-its for the cars pulling in, right? So they're not driving over sidewalk. So wouldn't it sort of like cross over the sidewalk and fill it to the curb line rather than to the inside of the.
Well, currently, there is no sidewalk there. Currently, it is, what did I do that? There we go. Currently, that is the existing pavement. Terminus of the sidewalk is right at that stone wall right there. So the existing drive to the former house that used to be on that property literally is just an angled line in from Route 33, or 108, or Portsmouth Avenue, whatever you want to call it, and what we've done is, is extended that out to here, and then the sidewalk, we will extend it to the point that there will need to be a tip-down for handicap access. And then the sidewalk then picks up again, as it does currently over here in front of the Hampton Inn driveway.
Okay, so I guess I'm just, I mean, can you make that, can you tighten up that curb cut anymore? Like, could you extend that curb any further?
Well, the only way to really do that would make it a smaller radius, which would be tougher for, you know, bigger vehicles making that turn.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm just thinking like, like the curb ends, right? And then, so the car is going to start churning in, and to me, it looks like the car is going to be turning in onto the grass. Like, it's not super clear. Like, because I feel like the radius is like.
It's off.
In the wrong spot. It's not, it's usually you would fill it the curb line of the road with the road.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. It appears you're correct.
We could bring that sidewalk, bring that curb around, I'm sorry, I got them the mic. We could bring that sidewalk around, and that would actually line it up with the Hampton, with the other sidewalk across the way, because right now, the two sidewalks are a little bit offset, which I think kind of makes it a little challenging. But if we brought it around that curb and put the tip down in the same, in line with the other tip-down, I think that would accomplish what you're looking for.
I think that would help, yeah, it just, it seems, just looking at the plan, and maybe I've just, it's the way it's like rendered, like not fully kind of like filled out, but it just seems, it's like you're taking like a not, it's not a great situation, I, this is better, but I feel like it could be even clearer, like, this is sidewalk, this is road, this is, this is where everyone's supposed to go. I feel like this is a little bit like.
Yep, no, I can totally see that, and what we'll do is we will add coloration, maybe just a lighter color, darker color.
Just to clarify, yeah.
For existing conditions, off-site.
Yeah.
For the next round, not a problem.
And access as well. I mean, to a pretty much.
It would probably be a good idea to put an actual striped crosswalk there, from sidewalk to sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then that, that sharp on the right-hand side of the driveway, the sharp angle that you have there.
Yeah.
That's existing?
That's existing, and we have no ability to improve that, because that is basically the entrance to the loop drive in front of the Hampton Inn. I'm not sure if it's the concierge drop-off or.
Isn't it also a telephone pole right there?
There is a telephone pole right there.
Yeah, that's what I thought I bumped into this morning.
Right.
With your car? No.
Well, at least you found it, Lang.
Yes, I did.
You knew where you were on the plan.
And they had coffee there.
Yeah, that's true as well, there is a pole right there, Jen.
Yeah, okay.
So unfortunately, that one is what, you know, is going to remain in its existing state.
Yeah.
You also spoke this morning that the encouraged traffic flow would be right in and right out.
Correct.
And signage was going to be there somewhere?
There will be, yeah, it will be right at the entrance with a stop sign.
Are you proposing that, or did somebody tell you to do that?
We had Kim Hazvatarian look at it from T E P P, and he said that would be a great thing, but he followed that immediately up with, if there's not a lot of traffic on the road at a given hour, people are going to do what they're, they're going to do what they want to do anyway.
I mean, my, it's just, my thoughts on this is that, again, this residential, these people are going to know when they can get out and when they can't.
Yes.
I don't, the more times we encourage a sign that we know people are going to ignore, it's not a good idea, because then people learn to ignore signs, so.
Okay.
So your suggestion then, Mr. Kennedy would be just don't put it in, and.
That's my.
They'll figure out the right way to go.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that works for me.
Stop sign, yeah.
You don't want to keep thinking for people?
No, I'm just sharing my opinion. I've seen too many signs that are prohibiting things, and people ignore them.
People, yeah, I totally agree.
Oh, you can take it.
And that's what I said to the board members that were on site today, is that, you know, I mean, I don't know who the hell is going to police it, but we can do our best.
Don't say the condo association, okay?
They will not, they're the offenders.
Well, so anybody in the public who'd like to speak about this one, so we don't rush up here all at once. If you'd like to speak, step to the microphone and, or use the microphone and introduce yourself, so our favorite viewers at home will know who's speaking, and we will also know who you're speaking. So if you'd like to do that, step up, please. Well, same then, I'll close the public visit at this point.
One question I did want to review with the board.
Yes, good question, yes.
That came up in the second Underwood review, was that the, that out the retaining walls should be designed at this point. Now, bear in mind, again, these are going to be relatively tall walls, and it's kind of a funky situation, because the foundation on that back building, the southerly and southeasterly side of it are going to be, the retaining wall is going to be the foundation. It's just a monolithic retainage, and I know John's done tons of buildings like that. Off, once you start running away from that, that's going to be a freestanding retaining wall. Their suggestion or recommendation is that we get that designed by a structural engineer now, and typically, that's something that we'll do after we know the building isn't moving, or we're not going to have other changes required by the board, et cetera. So I just, because we're going to, obviously, once Rob and I get through our collaboration and getting everything squared away on both plans, that we're going to obviously respond to the second Underwood memo, and I just need your opinion on that. If you guys are comfortable.
Can you describe that again? Like, so the retaining wall adjacent to the building is the building foundation.
Correct.
But then what happens?
So once you get down to the western corner of that back building, Jen, and you see it angle away, that is then a separate retaining wall, but it will be connected to the foundation of that back building.
Would that be concrete block or ported place, or is it?
Very likely, that's typically what they do, but again.
In a locking box of some kind?
Yeah.
And as we're looking at the picture there, you're talking the left side.
Correct, correct.
And the walkway is going to be.
Yes.
And the total amount of soil you're retaining is 10 feet-ish?
At the highest, and that's pretty much right at the southerly corner of that back building. And then obviously, it tapers down as you head to the northeast, and heads down as you head towards the west.
I mean, I would say the intent of having a structural engineer review would be to prove it's doable. I think it's doable, so.
Right.
I don't think that's necessary at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to have to be done anyway before they're going to get a building.
Exactly.
And that's, that's more common.
I'd leave that at your preference, but I don't think you need to prove to me that you can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, the foundation itself, though, is going to be bigger, thicker than regular foundation, right?
A lot more reinforced steel, it's usually a 12-inch, usually a 12-inch wide wall versus eight or 10, and there's reinforced steel inside there, and an engineer stamps it, so we're made sure we're good.
Yeah.
I do think it would be helpful to see on the plans, though, like, the, the actual grading, you know, with, like, you're going to have the retaining wall and then that path in the back and the.
Yeah, more detail back there.
Like, I feel like the grading is not really responding to the wall at all, it's just kind of a wall placed on a, there's a couple contour lines drawn, but, yeah, I think it would be, it'd be really helpful to understand what the height is along the wall, like, you know, at the corner of the parking and all of that. Also, I mean, do you need to put any like fall protection at the top of that retaining wall?
Well, behind the building, no, because there's the building.
Yeah, you'd fall into the building.
Yeah, and I believe by the time we get down near the parking lot, we're only at four or five feet.
Four is above four feet, anything above that.
So anything above that, if we do end up with a, with a space that is higher than four feet, you will have some sort of protection put on there.
I mean, I think, I don't know if it needs to be a stamped engineer drawing, but I think it would be helpful on the plans to show the intent of the construction type of the different retaining walls, and maybe on the plan differentiate, because right now, it just looks like one big solid wall, it looks like it's very thin, which I think there's probably a thickness associated with it, which has an impact on the site plan. So I think just showing that level of detail would be helpful. I don't think, I would agree, like, building permit, they're going to need to see the engineering stamp, it'll happen.
Exactly, yeah.
But I just want to see how it's going to impact the site plan.
And again, I think when Rob and I sit down together and we kind of hammer out all of those minutia of the details, we'll get all of that on the next one.
Can you talk a little bit about the Portsmouth Ave front building front? Because I got to tell you, I do like the prior front. Like, Gwen, I do, I mean, it is personal preference, but.
But consider the location.
I'm just sharing my opinion. I think either one is, meets the code, but, I mean, what was the reasoning behind the change?
It was mostly just to pull the decks, because the decks would push it out another, you know, four feet towards the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I think the fear was, was any kind of, I think we had three trees that are still shown right here, that would provide crowding for any kind of the trees that we would put in there, so through the TRC process, they asked if we could kind of bring that back a little bit. Well, I still wanted to keep some kind of dimension with, with the sliders, or, you know, some kind of balcony on the front.
Yeah, I like that.
To break it up. Yeah, right.
A little dormer right there.
Yeah, just to provide some kind of dimension to it.
Right.
But in a lot of ways, I do agree that.
Yeah.
The first.
It's everybody's personal choice.
Yeah, if, there's one more picture, two, where basically, we're just trying to provide, this one's.
Is that the one row?
There should be kind of an ISO angle, yeah, right there. So basically, was just trying to provide a look to make it look like it's a dormered side.
Yeah.
To help out a little bit. I threw a bump out in the middle there, and it just seemed a little off, so I took it out, plus that's on the kitchen wall.
Where's snow storage happening?
Well, basically, you've got the end of the two visitor stalls, left-hand side of the rear building, adjacent to Unit D, off the end of that, and then you've got the bit that would basically push into the wall, so again, this is probably going to, if we have a big snow year, they're going to be moving a lot of snow out of here.
Yeah.
Same thing with the end next door?
Yes, exactly.
Push it out of Portsmouth Ave.
Let DOT do it.
They're not looking.
I don't, I don't think they would smile upon us for that.
Back to the foundation question I have. John, you were describing the wall. Is there any need for underground drainage at all? Are you above that level?
We'll have, we'll definitely have drainage, so we, at the bottom of the wall, which is the bottom of the foundation, we'll have a drain that runs around the whole thing, so, because it does have space in there, and it has a basement behind the garage.
Yeah, good, a good cross-section, and show that with wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, and just, just to let you know, Lang, that is probably unlikely to see much water.
Yeah.
Because of the elevation, I mean, the bottom of those slabs.
Yes.
Are going to be just slightly above the existing grade we were standing on there today.
Yeah.
And of course, you could see, there was no water coming out of that entire slope, nor puddling in the back of that, but it, you almost have to do it in this climate. So there will be, you know, drainage at the bottom of the wall.
So the beautiful boulder there, that could, that should be, that should be incorporated as part of the landscaping.
The beautiful boulder is going to live, because as you can see, that's right about here.
Yeah.
And so that mulch bed from the Hampton Inn actually spills on this property a little bit. We're not actually disturbing that, and that boulder was sitting in that mulch bed. It's going to stay right where it is.
Have picnic lunch right on it on a Sunday day. I mean, good, yay!
I'll meet you there Sunday.
You can bring the coffees.
Do all the units have decks?
Yeah.
Negative.
The middle ones don't, right?
None of them have decks.
Yeah, I mean, the balcony, whatever you want to call it.
Six-inch long deck.
Yeah.
Yeah, just those kind of bars in front of the slider.
Yeah, I just wonder why you can't put those in a little bit more out. I mean, I just find people do like to get outside, and it's, you know, somewhat limited. Obviously, you don't have a big piece of land here for a rec area, you know? You're kind of in town, but having a barbecue outside of your space is kind of nice, or a lawn chair, and I don't know, I would try to challenge you to see if you could incorporate something like that. I think it'd be an improvement to your units.
When we're, oh, sorry, when me and Christian are kind of getting together on that back detail, we'll see what kind of room we have on that back corner to provide some kind of area, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you don't have to do it, but I think it's an improvement.
We've done ones before on projects where it's as simple as, you know, a 10-by-10, 12-by-12 paver pad with Adirondacks, right?
Sure.
You know, people use those way more than they use park benches.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. So is that little square rectangular space between Unit D and Hampton Inn, is that for parking or snow storage or...
That is the two visitor stalls.
Ah, okay. Got to have that in some...
You're going to park at the Hampton Inn and you walk over. That's what they're really going to do.
Yeah, the snow storage there, Mr. Chairman, would be just off the end of that.
Yes.
To the extent that it fit, and then again, they're going to have to truck it outside.
Well, have we beat this enough?
Yeah. Everybody looks tired.
We've got to look fresh, because we've got another case coming up.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, I am, as a matter of fact.
Okay, so I think it's a table motion.
He's getting good at tables.
I'm trainable.
He does his thing.
Push the button. I move that the application for StoneArts Development Planner Board Case Number 25-1 be tabled to the 24th?
Well, Madam Kristen is checking the calendar right now.
Okay.
Next meeting. Oh, I could look at my calendar, too.
24th is the next meeting.
That gives you plenty of time, yeah?
Yeah, true. Simple request.
Yeah, to April 24th, 7:00 PM. What is this, the NOAC room?
NoAC.
Yep.
NoAC room? Okay, there's more to it. Planner Board meeting and revised plans documents shall be submitted to the planning office at least eight days prior to the meeting, or the application may remain on the table to a future meeting. So that gives you enough time? Gives you six days?
Yeah, should be fine.
Okay.
Second. Oh, moved to second. We can do this with a voice vote. I'm going to. Those in favor saying yes, if they're in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
Nays, stenches? Grab my hand. That's good, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
A good night.
Always a pleasure.
Yeah. Apologize to half the pastor here two times in a row tonight.
Really, three times? I saw you this morning, too.
Yeah, that's true, with the sidewalk this morning.
Kind of wearing it out.
Probably not had enough of me.
Leave us alone.
Spending more time with us than your family these days.
When I go home and see my dogs, they appreciate me.
Because you...
Okay.
Have a good night.
You, too, thank you.
Okay, 10 to 10, we've got time to start another case?
Let's do it.
Application of Date Auto Holdings Community Trust, Volvo Cars of Exeter, for a minor site plan review of a wetland conditional use permit, CUP, for the proposed construction of a 6,200-square-foot addition to the rear existing Volvo dealership at 140 Portsmouth Avenue, along with associated site improvements. Southern property is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District, and it's identified as tax map parcel number 52-108 and 51-1, and as Planning Board Case Number 25-2. And you have some notes to talk about?
Yes, I do.
Kristen?
Let's see, so your packet containing plans and supporting documents dated February 19th. A technical review committee meeting was conducted on March 20th. TRC comments found the presence was animal, and were so noted by the developer and engineer at the meeting. The materials were provided to Underwood for a cursory review, and they indicated the application was very complete and appeared it did not need review by them. The letter of documenting that is in your packet. The applicant is requesting one waiver from the Board's Site Plan Review and Subdivision regs in conjunction, sorry, conjunction with the application to relief from Section 9.2.4-1A regarding the proposed pitch of the roof. That is in your packet. The applicant submitted revised plans and supporting documents on April 2nd. The applicant did present their wetland conditional use permit application to the Conservation Commission this past Tuesday, April 8th. There was unanimous endorsement of the application as presented, of the conditional use permit application as presented. Dave says at a minimum, he would suggest the Planning Board consider a vote on accepting the plans as complete for review purposes, and if deemed complete, hold the public hearing to get input from the public and consider scheduling a site walk if deemed appropriate. He provided the motions, and he did also provide conditions of approval should the Board decide to forego a site walk.
Thank you. Now, I'm looking for a motion to open this case.
I make a motion to open the case. Planner Board Case Number 25-2.
It's ready to be heard, yes, okay. Do we have a second, John?
Yes.
Yes, so thank you. So, voice vote again, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, stenches, the ayes have it. And normally I would ask Kristen to read this, it's time, but she just finished it, and we are short on time, so, anyway, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, we'll try to make this quick. My name is Corey Belden with Altus Engineering, and I'm here with Dan and Adam Exing from Volvo Cars of Exeter, and Jonathan Smith is here from Warren Street Architects, the building addition design. This is a fairly straightforward project. This is an expansion of the automobile service center on the north side of the building. It'll be, oh, what'd I do? So this piece right here is the expansion. This is 6,200-square-foot addition to the building, completely within the existing parking area, so there's no increase in impervious area for the site at all, completely. All of the utilities for the building will be extended internally from the existing building to the addition. Per the town's stormwater regulations, there is a requirement for minor site plans that 30% of the site be treated for stormwater. Back in 2020, when this parking lot expansion was completed, a stormwater wet pond was constructed adjacent to the site. It's actually also on property owned by Date Auto Holdings. So this project, what we are doing is collecting all of the roof runoff from this existing building and our new building, putting in underground downspouts and running that. Let me go to the next. And so we'll be collecting those with a drain system and connecting that back over to the stormwater pond. We've modeled that, if you've gone out there, it's a pretty deep pond. The only, you know, we've modeled in NitroCAD, has the capacity to hold the additional flow. The only thing that we're doing is, we're going to raise the outlet structure by a foot just to add more capacity for infiltration in the pond before it overflows for the increased flow. So as Kristen said, we met with TRC back on May 20th, very, very minor comments from them, and Conservation Commission just this past Tuesday had no comments from them. There is a conditional use permit because, it's hard to see on this, but the wetland buffer line comes right along the edge of property, right here where we're reconstructing some pavement. We have 210 square feet of, it's basically, I wasn't even sure if it would be exempt from, because it is existing pavement already within the buffer, we're just reconstructing that existing pavement because of the grading that we're doing on this backside of the service center with a ramp that will come up to into the building. So we have a little bit of impact there, and then the other impact is we'll be constructing a new pipe that collects these downspouts over to the wet pond. So that was another, calculate 165 square feet of impact really to just install that pipe to the wet pond. So that's what the conditional use permit application is. Also noted was, we have a waiver request for the roof pitch, and I'm going to go, I do have Jonathan Smith from Warren Architects here, but, and Jonathan, please, if I say something incorrectly, you can correct me, but the middle building actually has, already has a, when I say the middle building, the...
Existing back building?
Existing back portion of the building. Has, also has a 1-to-12 pitch on the roof, so the new, this here is the expansion, the addition that we're going to be doing.
Okay.
And therefore, we're matching the roof line of that existing building, which is 1-to-12, so therefore, we're requesting a waiver for 1-to-12 when the regulations say that a 3-to-12 pitch on the roof is required. The, we've provided the, on this second application based on our comments that we received at TRC, we've also are showing the lighting fixture locations on the architectural plans. They're now shown in here, and we provided cut sheets to show that all of the lighting is dark sky compliant lighting. It's only, it's all just building-mounted lighting as well. And, again, I think that's a pretty straightforward project. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Do you want to open it to the public real quick?
Oh, we could open it to the public, real quick.
So you have to do it.
And they can speak. If you'd like to brush the microphone, you've got the bit, you know, introduce yourselves, so your viewers at home will be able to see until the telephone at you.
So, the lot next door...
Seeing none.
Same owner.
John's part of the public, I think, I don't know.
Your question again?
I go all the way back to the existing conditions plan, but yes, the owner, there's actually three, this lot is the current house of the Volvo. This lot here is actually owned by Date Auto Holdings as well, as well as this larger lot. So right now...
I'm thinking ahead, they're going to need more parking if you're eating up parking with your new building.
That's a good question.
So they have, have an agreement for an off-site storage place where they park their vehicles off-site, so they're doing that. And, you know, one of the reasons for some of the additional parking is that a lot of the cars that are waiting, that are parked there, are waiting to be serviced. So they have, they'll have a number of cars that they need to service. Now with six additional bays, that they'll be able to, you know, actually clear up some of the parking on-site as well, so it will help a little bit.
Move inventory faster.
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Last thing.
Yes.
They also know, we noted at the Conservation Commission meeting, they have existing solar on the building, and they've indicated that they're going to expand that solar onto the, this new roof as well.
Nice.
That is...
But look like skylights almost in your drawing. This is solar.
So I just want to talk to the board for a second. We're all familiar with the site?
Yep.
Do we think a site walk is necessary or not? For me, it's not.
I don't think so.
No?
I think it's fine.
Well, with that being said, we might be able to muck through this, this evening, in my opinion.
Well, go right ahead, it's 10 o'clock, you've got 15 minutes, which is...
Okay. Wow.
At 11 o'clock.
Mister punctuality. Careful, I get more sarcastic after 10.
All right. Get...
I think it's an excellent, excellent use of the property. It's nice to see an existing established business expanding. I think they're doing it in a responsible fashion. I think the CUP is certainly warranted in this case, minimal impact, no more impervious surface. I think it's a...
I like that they're able to use the stormwater management system that's in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, saves all of work.
Right, then I don't have to redo everything. It's really just further utilizing their existing property.
Yeah.
I think it's also essentially out of sight from the general public, so getting into a lot of aesthetics, to me, doesn't really serve a purpose. So I can't personally bring up much more that I need to discuss on this application, Anybody have anything they feel like, I mean, the roof pitch?
Roof pitch is fine.
Match an existing pitch, makes sense.
No, it's good. You mentioned the lighting on the building, is there a photometric plan?
There is not a photometric plan. It's all really just building-mounted lights to light doors and entryways, and they're all downlit lights, so there's no, so we didn't, there wasn't a photometric plan provided.
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, it's something that I think is required, right? I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I feel like, because we are so close to the wetland buffer, I think it'd be good to have that submitted as a, maybe as a condition, just to ensure that the lights, you know, I think it's just a good exercise to go through, because sometimes you do it and you're like, oh, that's more light than we needed, and so I think it's just a good thing to do and submit. And just be...
Are the lights on through the night for security purposes?
So, there's an existing lighting system that's lights the parking lot, but we're not doing any modifications to the existing parking lot lighting. We're just doing a building expansion, and the lights on the building are really only to light the doorways and entryways, and they're all downlit. They're, those, you know, the lights that you put over the doors, and we've provided the cut sheets for them, they're all dark skylighting that just shoot down and light that area. I believe they're all on motion sensors, positive.
I don't know.
But the, most likely, I...
They certainly could be.
Those, yeah.
It's like, when it gets light up, the door.
But I don't believe they would be on, they wouldn't be on 24 hours a day, the lights on the...
They would be on overnight.
That's how they currently are. Just lighting their garage door and the man's, sorry, door.
Person door. Person door.
Human door.
The back of the existing building have lights in the same exact locations, they're just moving back 60 feet with the addition. And there are no additional lights on the wetland side. It's only in the back and the opposite, there's one on the opposite side of the building, that one door there at the bottom elevation, so it's not, it's not aimed towards the wetlands.
Okay, yeah, I think that was my concern, is the wall closer to the wetlands.
Any thoughts, Dean?
No?
Okay, that's all right. Not a whole thing, yes, Glenn? I was getting to you.
Yeah, this isn't really, this isn't part of the application. I guess I'm just questioning, when you were here before, we had discussions about the strip between the front building and Portsmouth Avenue and Volvo at the time, I think you stated that they, they didn't want anything that was above like a foot and I think you put maybe some mums or something at either end of that planting area. Is that still there? Because you don't, sad because you don't have a, there's just no vegetation anywhere on the site and it just feels very bare.
Wherever we can have some, we do have some. We have some in front of the showroom, yes, and some arborvitae plants.
Oh, really? I don't...
Sorry, sir, you got to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. DN Exing, owner of Volvo Cars of Exeter.
Thank you.
Sorry, yep. And we do keep those where the mums are updated every spring and we have another one on the front end, but it's as much as we can do with that. We keep the white crushed stone maintained too.
Did you come up with a solution for that with respect to winter, snow blowing or plowing?
I did, yep. I called, I called the DPW when I left the other day and he's going to put snow stakes along the front of that because it's the sidewalk snow blower that kicks those up. He came right down and cleaned the rest of them up, but, yeah, so we're going to do snow stakes along the whole thing.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
And I watered those mums.
You put all the red wagons.
Good for you. Some summers, that's a challenge.
Jen, you all set? You got some comments?
Yeah, I just had the question about the lighting, which I feel has been satisfied, so no.
Good, good. He's good, okay.
Do you want to ask Corey to present the roof pitch motion, waiver?
How about the waiver motion about the pitch? Can you show, throw us a pitch for the motion?
So, I'm just going to read your, so, please consider the following waiver request to section 9.2.4.1A of the site and subdivision regulations as amended August 2023 for the above mentioned project. We request that the town of Exeter allow the submitted project to proceed with a roof slope less than the 3 to 12 required under section 9.1.4.1A. We propose that the roof pitch of the addition matches the existing service bay building that the addition is attached to. This reason is for matching the existing roof slopes is to prevent a differential height between the addition and the existing building from exceeding two feet, which would require the existing building to be structurally upgraded to accommodate additional drifting snow loads per International Building Code 2021, Section 1608, 2.1. The existing and proposed roof pitches are approximately 1 to 12. Did you want me to go through the waiver conditions or do you...
Briefly, if you don't mind.
So, the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health or welfare or injurious to other property, which I think is, meets that criteria. The conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought and are not applicable generally to other property. Uniqueness is that it's attaching to an existing building that has the same roof pitch. Because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguishable or mere inconvenienced if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out. I think that one's more intended for setbacks in site waiver requests or not vert, not roof pitches. So I don't know if that one is really applicable. The granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. I don't think that it is and the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan, which would not.
Thank you. I'm ready to make a motion.
Make a motion, please.
Roof pitch motion after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers. I move at the request of Data Auto Holdings Volvo Cars of Exeter Planning Board Case Number 25-2 for a waiver from section 9.2.4.1A requiring a 3 to 12 or greater pitched roof or gabled roof where practical be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Glenn. Moved and seconded. Hand vote, please, those in favor. Glenn, or everybody? Think that's okay? Yep? Inamis vote, carries?
Now you got the CUP to discuss.
Yep. Conditional use permit.
Yes, so as mentioned, the, rating will change, there are, the request is for 375 square feet of impact within the 100-foot buffer, I mean, the 75-foot buffer. This is for 210 feet, which is really reconstruction of existing pavement that's within the buffer, just to, for this grading, we want to draw, you know, keep this little section here where you can see the buffer line just extends just into the parking lot area, so that portion and then 165 feet really is just to construct the new drain line to the wet pond that will be collecting the additional roof drainage from the downspouts over to the wet pond, increasing the percentage of impervious onsite that will be treated will be, now be up to 43% where 30% is required, so.
Kristin, did you go to the meeting?
The ConCon?
Yeah, and pretty straightforward.
Yep, straightforward, no comments and they unanimously supported the CP.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very minimal impact, obviously, and it's a, the fact that the lighting doesn't spill over, I think is good. Something we do keep track of, so I'm, I'm ready to read a motion if you're ready to hear one.
Right ahead.
All right. Conditional use permit, wetlands motion after reviewing the criteria for a wetlands conditional use permit, I move that the request of Data Auto Holdings Volvo Cars of Exeter Planning Board Case Number 25-2 for a wetlands conditional use permit be approved.
Second?
Second.
John, second, yeah.
Okay, John, thank you. Okay, let's go and do a hand vote, please, those in favor. Opposed, abstentions, inamis vote, carries?
Okay.
Now we're ready for minor site plan motion.
So we got to talk about our conditions?
Ah, conditions.
So I think the one that Jen brought up about a lighting detail is probably the most relevant, the only condition I think we discussed, right? Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think I...
Do you feel like you need it?
I don't think I need it anymore. I mean, obviously somebody else can propose it, but I, I'm satisfied with...
I don't think...
Yeah, it was really just that wetland edge, but I mean, it makes sense if they're just at the doors, like there's no...
They're not going to put lights up.
Right.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with just the description.
You are, okay, all right. Then I guess you have the standard, right?
Can I read them?
We don't mind, thank you.
We miss them whenever I'm out here.
Condition one, an electronic as-built plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in a DWG or DXF file format and in an ADNAD 1983 state plane, New Hampshire FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. Two, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and their contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. A SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan if applicable, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Condition three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Item four, the stormwater system operation and maintenance report in the stormwater operations and maintenance plan dated February 19th, 2025 shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January 31st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Item five, all state plane, sorry, all state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Item six, all landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained and any, and any dead or dying vegetation. I think we could skip that one.
Oh, no.
Those mums, baby.
Any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the following growing season as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedure set forth in state statutes. Item seven, all outdoor lighting, including security light, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. And finally, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submittal must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Thank you. I'll go ahead again, just get this done.
Okay, somebody else wants to go ahead.
Let's get it done. I know Marty doesn't look like he's...
You're on a roll.
Minor site plan motion, I move at the request of Data Auto Holdings Volvo Cars of Exeter Planning Board Case Number 25-2 for minor site plan approval be approved with the conditions as read by Kristin Murphy.
Okay, so second.
Second.
Second down there, okay. Thank you, Glenn. So again, hand vote, those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Opposed, abstentions, inamis, carries? Got you done.
Made it. Good luck with your project.
You will be out of here by half past 10.
I missed the master plan.
You did.
I did.
One question, does Volvo make cars in China?
Not that they're coming, not their...
Oh, really?
How about the aluminum, how about the aluminum question?
Really? Interesting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take care, good job.
So they've had storage space somewhere else.
Yeah.
All right.
Seeing the hour, you wanted just to adjourn?
Yes. You've been able to him burning things from Dave, did you?
I do not.
Kristin, okay. Uh, you get, is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Carries.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.